Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for Calaveras County. Just so everybody's aware, we have opened up the courtroom next door with audio and live television. So for the overflow, we can have folks go into our courtroom located to my right, which will be right over there, and they'll be able to monitor the proceedings and still have enough seating for everybody. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Item one is a closed session agenda: conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2.
At this time, we'll have public comment on item one of the closed session. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting, October 17th. At this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Mills, if you'd please, let's begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Report of closed session: conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. There was no reportable action, and the board may reconvene into closed session during lunch. During lunch.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, today's going to be a very important day. I would like to solicit all your cooperation in making this a very productive hearing, also to remind everybody, staff, board, and our friends out here, that we are going to be showing respect to everyone: our speakers, our public, our staff, and our board. I am going to commit to making this meeting run very productive and respectful. I would solicit your cooperation to make that happen. We do have auxiliary seating next door. We have audiovisual. You can hear us. You can see us if you're in the next courtroom. If you desire to speak during a public comment period, and if you're in the other courtroom, would you please come to the foyer? And, once again, we want to maintain a safe aisleway here. And enter the chambers and stand in line, no more than five people, please, so you have an opportunity to public address the board and this meeting. Is there any questions by staff? Any questions by board? Seeing none, we'll proceed. Madam Clerk?
Announcements: this meeting may be continued to Wednesday, October 18th, 2017, at 9:00 a.m., if not completed today.
Okay. Is there any announcements by staff or by the Board of Supervisors?
My team is available.
Oh, sorry, Sheriff. Ladies and gentlemen, apparently in the women's bathroom, there was a cellphone left in there and is now...
Missing.
Missing. So if you're missing your cellphone and you were in the ladies' bathroom, your cellphone is unknown where it's at, so...
So she knows it's missing?
Oh, she knows it's missing. We just don't know where it's at. Okay. So if anybody starts ringing out there, make sure it's your cellphone. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Public comment: any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Okay, so everybody's clear. This is the general public comment period. It's not, if this is the time to bring up any topic that is not on today's agenda, on the regular agenda. There'll be another item-specific public comment period for each item on the agenda. I want everybody to understand that we want to stay focused on each individual item as we discuss it as a board and as this hearing progresses. That's on the regular agenda. Apparently, on this agenda, we have no consent agenda. We do have a consent? All right. Please wait till we get to that item-specific public comment period so you can speak specifically to that period, to that issue. I know it's going to be a little tough to kind of separate these issues, and we'll try to make the best of this as we can. I will be commenting if we see somebody drifting off, and that'll be an inquisitive comment to find out where your train of thought's going. Okay? Do we understand that? Thank you. Public comment? First to speak. Hello, Marty.
Good morning, Marty Crane. First, I wanted to say that we all know we have lots of challenges going on, but there are lots of wonderful, positive things that happen. And one thing I want to share is that the Volunteer Center has been developing a community volunteer campus for a couple of years now, several years now. And thank you Supervisor Toffinelli for coming to our four-day open house and checking it all out. It's a, if anyone knows the story of stone soup, this is stone soup on steroids. It is phenomenal, and it's a wonderful resource for our community, built by and with and through the community. So there's, we always say that when the community comes together and really puts their minds to things, magic happens. Magic can happen in all areas, so I wish us luck today. But also, I also wanted to say kudos to our county, our public, our board, for the compassionate and thoughtful recognition in recent weeks on our breast cancer awareness. If anyone hasn't seen that presentation, please go back and watch it. Get a bag, a box of tissues. It's wonderful. We can fix anything. We can fix everything if we do it together. And then also, last week, I wasn't able to be here. I was supposed to receive the resolution on bullying, but I couldn't be here because I was at a Red Cross shelter. So was Jack. And, but I watched it on television, and kudos to Bonnie, to our H.R., to Janice, to Jack, for expanding on that issue. And the one issue that, that I, after having been at this, in this room since 2002 for almost every meeting except for recently, when I've had a tool belt on, I've seen the public bully the board. I've seen the bully, the certain board members bully other board members, and so we know what that looks like. If, if you think three votes is all you need, three votes means that you win that day. You personally win that day. Doesn't mean we win. That means we need more conversation, and some people have said, "Well, we talk things to death and we never do anything." Well, we kick the can down the road a lot, but we need serious, consistent conversations and policies that we all really, truly respect. So anyway, good luck to all of us. Let the magic happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to invoke our clapping clause here. I can do this, but I can't do this. Not today. Bonnie, how are you?
Good morning, Board. Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. Today, I'm talking as a taxpayer and an IHSS home care provider. I'm going to speak of the plight of the IHSS home care provider in Calaveras County. There's approximately 335 of us. We work about 500,000 hours a year, costing the state, federal, and local governments over $5 million. Only 64 of our 335 have the most minimal health insurance, partially paid by the member themselves. There's no sick leave, vacation leave to speak of, and for family members that care for a loved one in their own home, they don't get any social security benefits. None is taken out, and they don't, they could work 30, 40 years, and they have nothing when they end up losing their client or having a stroke themselves. Our last contract was negotiated in 2007 with a one-year extension. It expired in 2010. Our last increase was a minimum wage bump last January, and before that, our last wage increase was in 2009. How would you all like to be working for the same wages you made in 2009? The average home care worker works about 25 to 30 hours a week. Their average paycheck is between $1,000 and $1,200 a month, and some workers with protective supervision on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. There's a new requirement that the federal government is laying on home care workers that is designed to dismantle the program even further than the cuts, and it's going to require something called EVV, electronic visit validation, which means home care workers are going to be required, every time they change a service component, to phone in somewhere and document how much time is being spent on which task, and how is that going to be accomplished to people that don't have cellphones, that don't have computers, or don't have any of the technical things that they're going to be requiring home care workers to have in order to provide the most basic services to keep a client in their home rather than a facility where their average length of life is 13 months? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janice Bassett from Valley Springs, and I just want to kind of piggyback on what Marty Crane said about the Volunteer Center. It is just incredible what's been created by the community, and if you haven't seen it yet, you really need to go. It's wonderful. And there's just so many potential things for our community to happen there. It's just incredible. So to further that cause, I want to tell everybody about the Calaveras Family Showcase that is going to be at the Metropolitan here in San Andreas, that is going to support the brand-new Volunteer Center and the Valley Springs Youth and Family Center. And our friend Gary is going to do the site, the light, excuse me, the lights and the sound, and it's just a wonderful show. And if you come, be sure to bring plenty of tissues to catch all the tears of laughter and joy, because you're going to love it. And I have tickets with me, so if you want tickets, let me know. And I also want to mention about the fires. My daughter had to evacuate Santa Rosa, and she fled to her father-in-law's house in Boulder Creek, and now Boulder Creek is on fire. So I know that we all know how devastating that is, so just keep them in your, in your minds, and good luck to us all today. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice.
Hello, Board. I'm not sure if you want to go over that right now. That is a little cheat I made up after receiving 196 denial letters from the registration program. If you look at that, you'll see that 22 people couldn't put a sign up and were denied. Do you want me to stop on that? Anyway, on another note, I'll let you look over that. If I can go back to that, I will. I hope you all realize we're all naked today. They have hacked the Wi-Fi networks. Every one of us is exposed. Cisco, Microsoft, IBM, Apple, every operating system that we have today is now exposed to the hackers. All of your information, public and private, is now available on the web by a simple hack into your Wi-Fi network. Your personal, your county business is on the international web. So if I can go back to the denials, I mean, you saw that?
Stay on topic.
Okay. Anyway, I think we need to look into our own personal stuff and resecure, there's going to be patches. If you have a home network, you need to make sure that your home network is up to date and you install that patch on your nice little Wi-Fi network. Your router is now exposed. Basically, all of our information is out there for anybody to get. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello, Joan.
Joan Wilson, District One. CDC states the 88,000 deaths and 2.5 million years of potential life loss each year from 2006 to 2010, four years, shortening the lives that died by the average of 30 years. This is alcohol, gentlemen. National Institute on Alcohol Abuse and Alcoholism, youths 12 to 17 years old, 623,000 had alcohol use disorder. 2014 alcohol-impaired driving fatalities, 9,967 deaths, 31% overall driving fatalities. 20-plus percent of age 12 to 20 reported binge drinking in the past month. 10% of children live with a parent with alcohol problems. That's from 2012. Alcohol effects: heart, cardiomyopathy, arrhythmias, stroke, high blood pressure, fatty liver, alcohol, hepatitis, fibrosis, cirrhosis, pancreatitis, cancer of the mouth, esophagus, throat, liver, breast. Your immune system is diminished. Women who consume eight or more drinks per week are considered excessive drinkers. And for men, excessive is defined as 15 or more drinks a week. The researchers define a drink as just five ounces of wine, 12 ounces of beer, or 1.5 ounces of spirits. This was taken from November 20th, 2014, from npr.org. It also has it on WebMD and other sites. Tobacco health risks: smoking cigarettes kills more Americans than alcohol, car accidents, HIV, guns, and illegal drugs combined. Smokeless tobacco is associated with many health problems. Using smokeless tobacco can lead to nicotine addiction, causes cancer of the mouth, esophagus, and pancreas. And associated with diseases of the mouth, it can increase risk for early delivery and stillborn, or stillbirth when used during pregnancy. Can cause nicotine. Gentlemen, I think if you want to get rid of some very dangerous drugs in this county, this might be where you want to start. Okay? There's a liquor store right across the street from the high school. How is it that we can have this? After all, the high school students could walk into that liquor store and steal liquor. Much easier than they can walk onto my farm, but I think maybe there's a point of starting here. Thank you.
I'm Gary Lewis, Mountain Ranch. I want to address an issue that was discussed and decided upon on the last meeting, August 22. My concern is that this issue still exists. Nothing has been done about the 85-plus percent crops growing on that property. I've included in the papers that you received... Mr. Lewis, are we going to be talking about marijuana? I am not talking about marijuana. I'll let you continue until a point where it does. Go ahead, sir. Can I get my couple of seconds back? Sure. Thank you. My concern is the regulations that were totally ignored in the development of this The concern is that the rest of us in the county follow the codes and regulations of the county. This whole process to me, in the discussions and the hearings, has the smell of political cronyism to me. There should be, in fact, a cease and desist order issued to the property owner immediately as the violations continue, the rest of us comply. Owing to the deliberate and long-going and current out-of-compliance violations of the Calaveras County zoning requirements, that this situation still exists, I ask the board why? I've already stated how it exists. It's improper. Why has the Board of Supervisors or the regulatory agencies not addressed these violations? And how can any future code violations be addressed? Mr. Lewis, in reference to your document, you're talking about water tables. That's what I thought you were... No, I'm talking about the water table as well as the amount of growth on that property. Primarily, the most of the property is taken up by vineyards. You can continue, sir. Thank you. When I first became aware of the property on the corner of Michael and Cave City Road, I like wine. My wife and I drink wine. We enjoy wine. I assumed mistakenly that this was all legal and proper and permitted until an application for rezoning to rural agricultural was submitted. We were notified. That's the bulk of the first two pages that are in my papers I supplied today. There's no regulation, apparently, being applied to this property. It still exists there. That's how I became aware of it. I sense that the will to enforce a regulation is failing. Thank you. Mr. Frye, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm here this morning as a member of the Commission on Aging, and I would like to thank Susan Tomasich as the Chair of the, this year's Senior Volunteer of the Year for her outstanding contribution to chairing that took place. Uniquely this year, we nominated, there were 18 nominees that came in, and of the 18 nominees, we decided on four, four awards: Senior Male Volunteer of the Year, Senior Female Volunteer of the Year, the Outstanding Achievement of the Year Award, and Couple of the Year And what was interesting, out of those 18, each one of those were a unanimous vote. And we held a luncheon out at Dodasa Ranch by Verson, and I would like to especially thank Supervisor Toffinelli and Chair Michael Olivera for attending that. I had checked with the other supervisors, and they were already committed to meetings, and I appreciate them sharing that with me. So I think it was a great day had by all, and I want to thank both of you supervisors for attending that luncheon. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Frye. Is there any other public comment? Anybody in the other courtroom? If you wish to speak during public comment, you can approach the main chamber now. Morning, how are you?
Quote, or unquote, the Men's Journal, November 2017 issue on page 97 says that the opioid pandemic killed 160 people per day, and it could claim a half a million lives over the next 10 years, unquote. Quote, "Girls are selling blowjobs for the price of a bag of dope," unquote. On page 97, quote, "Statute says if you sell a controlled substance and it causes someone's death, you face 20 years to life," unquote. The DEA goes across state lines, and we are not exempt. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Alisa. I'm from Ranch of Calaveras. I'd like to talk to you, Clyde Clapp. What do you plan to do with the crime rate in Ranch of Calaveras?
Point of order, Chairman. I'll hear your point of order. Mr. Clapp is not within the subject matter jurisdiction of this board.
The crime rate is really high in Calaveras, potential?
Ma'am, ma'am, just let me rule on that, please. Your intent is to address what issue, ma'am?
The crime rate, the crimes that's going on, the thievery that's going on in Ranch of Calaveras. In Ranch of Calaveras, there, I have four tires ripped off of my car, not the tire, the rims, the tires, the brakes.
Okay, I'll allow you to continue.
And there was fingerprints taken. It's like, it's not a big deal.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'll allow you to continue on the crime rate, and I'll give you your time back.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and that's why I want to talk to Clyde Clapp, because isn't he my district supervisor in Ranch of Calaveras?
You can continue, ma'am.
Okay. So, two houses down, CCWD truck gets stolen out from the front of that house. That wasn't the first time that truck was broken into. That truck was broken into several times when the guy had another utility truck. It's constantly broken into. Just on Gardner Place alone, there has been so many houses broken into in the last two years. You can't blame it on farms. You can't blame it on pot. I'm telling you, it needs to be addressed, and it's like, nothing, nothing is happening. It's no big deal, but it's our stuff. We work hard for our stuff, you know? I can't afford to go out and buy tires and rims and brakes for my car, you know? I just, I want to know, what's your plans? What are you doing? Have you heard about the crime rate in your district? Please, I'm talking to you. Can you please answer me?
Point of order, is this not...
Ma'am?
I'm just... I'm just asking a question.
Ma'am, ma'am, could you hold for a moment? What's your point of order, ma'am?
Should this not be directed to the sheriff?
Ma'am, it's probably-
He's my supervisor.
Hey, hold on a minute, please. Let me answer her first.
Thank you.
It's a crime problem, and it's to the Board of Supervisors, and she can speak on this item as long as she stays within the boundaries of the crime problem. Sheriff is here, public is here, and it's her right to have public comment.
The sheriff's-
You can continue on the crime.
That's where I'm at.
And stay focused on the crime.
Yeah, and I am, because I'm very focused on the crime. I have video cameras out in front of my house. I videoed that truck driving off, you know? Nobody came. Nobody came wanting to see the video, wanting to see the person walking up to it. You know what the answer was? Oh, it must have been some drunk walking down the street. What bar is close to Gardner Place? If you're drunk and you're leaving the range, which would be closest to me, would you walk all the way to Gardner Place? Still that utility truck? Because you're drunk and you need a ride home? It's like, it downplays all that stuff. And I just want to live in a safe neighborhood. I grew in that neighborhood, I lived in that neighborhood for seventeen years, and just recently, within the last four years, the crime rate is just going out of control, and it just seems like it's not being taken care of. It's not being taken seriously, you know? I don't want to be a hootin', tootin', gun-holder thing. I'm not like that, but I want to be safe. And I want you to say, hey, I want to do something to make you guys safe, you know? I want to be able to go out in my house at midnight if I want and not worry about somebody's going to attack me or whatever. Come on, I live in rural California. That's something you worry about when you live in Stockton, LA, San Francisco. I shouldn't have to worry about that here, but nobody cares.
Thank you, ma'am.
I can see you care.
Thank you.
The Board usually doesn't respond to public comment, and since chairs choose to let it happen, is I would advise a person to contact the sheriff's office, because that's where it is. The Board does not enforce the law of the county. We make the law, and I hope the sheriff directs the people mix toward that.
Okay. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Raymond Smith, the Lobbying Director of Calaveras Normal. I'm from Valley Springs. I'd like to speak to the central meaning of Republican government, which is popular sovereignty. I have a few quotes from Ronald Reagan, former President Ronald Reagan. Government is like a baby, an elementary canal with a big appetite at one end and no sense of responsibility at the other. Balancing the budget is a little like protecting your virtue. You just have to learn to say no. We need to learn to say no to a ban and yes to regulations and safety.
All right, that's enough. We can't, that's an agendized item. Next speaker.
Gino, how are you?
Good. I'll bet you I drove further to get here than you did.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have to make an disclosure. Gino is our former probation officer for the county and a close friend, and he came from Arizona to speak.
And he's a hell of a probation officer. Anyway, my message is just simply for everyone, all parents. The twentieth to twenty-fifth is Red Ribbon Week. I'm here on behalf of narcotics officers, mostly, and we, for years through probation in the sheriff's office, provided to the community presentations for Red Ribbon Week to our children. I don't know if many of you are familiar with the name of Kiki Camarena. He was a narcotics agent who was murdered, cut up by cartels. I was an agent working in this county narcotics for almost ten years, and I see a lot of change that's occurred, you know, in the county, and we forget about the kids. And I want, my message from Mesa was basically, I know you've got the huge agenda here going on. I want to put another agenda. Rick, listen, go to the kids. Red Ribbon Week is drug prevention. Put it in their hearts, regardless of how it is, regulation, whatever the heck they're going, put it in their hearts that our unity, you know, our lives are important, child endangerment is important. You know, you're all adults, and you can do whatever you want in your households. Our children don't have a word, and they don't have a say. Protect our kids. And that was my message from Mesa.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our thirty-minute period for public comment. Can I see by a show of hands any further people that wish to speak during the general public comment? Sir, that will be continued after our regular agenda. All right.
Consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, has everybody reviewed the consent agenda items? If so, is there anybody from the public that wishes to pull any item from the consent Seeing none, is there any staff member or Board of Supervisors desiring to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Move by Supervisor Clapp. Second. Second by Supervisor Toffenelli. Any public comment on that? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board to the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed indicate by saying no. Hearing none, motion carries five zero, unanimous. Madam Clerk.
Item number four is from the Planning Department, to conduct a public hearing to adopt an ordinance rescinding Chapter seventeen dot ninety-five and replacing it with a new Chapter seventeen dot ninety-five banning or regulating cannabis cultivation and related commercial activities to certify the environmental impact report.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, before we start on this particular agendized item, I want to remind you how the procedure will work. First presentation will be by staff. There will be no time limit for staff presentations. Then there will be inquiries by the Board of Supervisors of staff. At that time, when that concludes, we'll open up the public comment on the specific agendized item. You will have three minutes to comment, and I would like to remind everybody, you'll get a lot more words said if you're not repeating the same issues by the previous speaker. So if you may want to kind of talk it over a little bit, if you have multiple people, and cover all topics within your time limits. We're going to go ahead and start the public comment, but we are going to be taking a break at ten o'clock. I'm sorry, not public comment. We'll start agenda item, but we will be taking a break at ten o'clock for staff, just so everybody's aware. Madam Clerk, first item, are you ready to go?
She's already read it, sir.
I'm sorry, what?
She's already read the item.
Okay.
I'll come.
Mr. Mauer, you're up.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I'm Peter Mauer, Planning Director. With me today are Gary Jacobs from Ascent Environmental, the primary consultant on the EIR, Julie Moss Lewis, Deputy County Counsel, Tiffany Wright, outside counsel from Remy and Lou's Manley, and Chris Muntank, also from Ascent. This item is a recommendation by the Planning Commission to amend Title seventeen to replace Chapter seventeen ninety-five, which is the urgency ordinance regulating commercial cannabis cultivation, with a new Chapter seventeen ninety-five, either banning all cultivation and commercial activities or strictly regulating them. These are equally weighted alternatives that the majority of the Commission forwarded to you. The ban would not apply to the minimum personal cultivation permitted under state law or to dispensaries, which are regulated under a separate ordinance that is following, the following item on your agenda. A little bit of background, in December two thousand and fifteen, the then sitting Board of Supervisors directed staff to prepare a regulatory ordinance that would allow and set standards for cultivation of cannabis, both indoor and outdoor, as well as related commercial uses such as manufacturing, testing, and distribution. At that time, the Board stated that they did not want to revise the dispensary ordinance. Staff returned to the Board in February two thousand and sixteen, draft regulations, and which the Board, after some modification, established as the provisions they would like to see in the ordinance. Staff determined, and the Board agreed, that an EIR would be the appropriate SEQA document to prepare, and the county undertook this process in early two thousand and sixteen by releasing the notice of preparation on April fifth, two thousand and sixteen. We also hired Ascent Environmental to prepare the EIR, and that contract was finalized in June last year. During that time, an influx of cannabis cultivators arrived at the county, and because of this new cultivation activity, concerns were raised by the public and staff that we needed to have some regulation in place in the interim while we were preparing the EIR and the final ordinance. So the urgency ordinance was adopted on May tenth, two thousand and sixteen. We had over seven hundred and forty registration applications that completely overwhelmed county staff, including the Planning Department, sheriff, code enforcement, as well as other departments. The county is still processing these applications, and so far, we've issued one hundred and eighty-eight applications. We've denied one hundred and eighty-six. Forty-five have been withdrawn, and there are still about three hundred and twenty that are in process. We've also processed ninety-eight appeals of those denied applications. In January, with the extension of the new board, a new direction was given to staff to ban cultivation and other activities. After discussion with the Board, it was agreed that the county should continue with preparation of the EIR and use that in whatever action is taken regarding the ordinance. The ban was an alternative in the EIR, and it's totally appropriate to use, to select an alternative identified in the EIR as the final ordinance. It's important to understand what the purpose of an EIR is, what it does and what it does not do. An EIR is an informational document. It is intended to provide the public and the decision-makers with information about the environmental effects of a project or action that the county may approve or undertake. It does not dictate the outcome of the decision, but identifies impacts, potential mitigation measures, and alternatives that could reduce the environmental effects of a project. It is not an economic analysis, although economics may be used to make findings of overriding considerations, should the county choose an alternative that has a greater environmental effect than the most environmentally sensitive one, or if it finds that mitigation measures are infeasible. SEQA is a procedural law. Steps must be taken and notice provided as prescribed by the law. The draft EIR was issued on May first, two thousand and seventeen, and circulated for a period of forty-five days, as required under SEQA. The county received numerous comments, all of which had to be responded to in the final EIR. That document was released September eighth. The EIR, the draft EIR, identified three alternatives to the proposed ordinance: no project, which is required by law, which compared the project with doing nothing and continued to operate under the urgency ordinance until it expires in February, a ban alternative, and a reduced zoning alternative, which eliminated the rural residential zone for commercial cultivation. The analysis in the EIR found that both the ban and the reducing, reduced zoning would have fewer environmental effects than the proposed ordinance. In response to comments on the draft EIR, a fourth alternative was added that could also further reduce impacts. This was to increase the minimum parcel size for cultivation. The ban was identified as the alternative with the least amount of environmental impacts, because it would prohibit any cultivation activity that could result in such impacts. The areas found to be impacted by the other alternatives but could be mitigated are impacts of biological resources, cultural resources, water quality, and air quality, specifically greenhouse gases. There were two areas that were found to be significant and unavoidable, where mitigation measures would not reduce it to a level of less than significance, and that was traffic and air quality relating to odors. There were many comments that disagreed with the findings of the EIR, which is not uncommon with controversial projects such as this. One area of controversy is the fact that the EIR does not address what might happen should a ban go unenforced. As stated earlier, the EIR does not typically analyze economic impacts of an action. It is an environmental impact report. However, this EIR did reference the fact that funding would be eliminated from the ban, both from the lack of fee revenue from subsequent applications or renewals, and because a major C tax would not be collected. But an EIR is supposed to analyze the impacts of the project, not what could happen if a developer, or in this case, cannabis growers, failed to comply with the conditions of approval or the provisions of an ordinance. To try to analyze such impacts would be pure speculation. The EIR prepared by the consultant is reviewed by County Counsel, the planning staff, and outside counsel hired to assist the county with this project. We have found that the EIR meets the requirements of SEQA, provides a range of alternatives, and adequately analyzes the identified impacts of the proposed ordinance and the alternatives. The draft ordinance recommended by the Commission is a comprehensive ban on cultivation of both medical and recreational cannabis, as well as manufacturing, testing, and distribution. It does provide for the minimum cultivation allowed by state law, which is six plants grown indoors. The recommendation also, oh, I'm sorry, but the ban ordinance also contains provisions for rehabilitation of existing cultivation sites. So it requires that any cannabis cultivation site that has been abandoned be cleaned up so that it is in a hazard-free and reusable condition. It does not require that it be returned to its original state. Where grading occurred, it's just not possible to regrade a site to, you know, go back to the original contours. But it does, similar to what we have with mining operations, a requirement that it be claimed that the soil be stabilized, that any kind of junk or garbage be cleaned up, structures removed, those kinds of things. So the Commission's recommendation is that we return to a usable and hazard-free condition. The other alternative of this Commission, which has not been fully developed into an ordinance, as the ban ordinance has been, is a regulatory ordinance that strictly limits where cultivation could occur. And attachment B in your staff report has the full, complete list of the bullets. I just wanted to highlight the principal points of what the Commission has recommended. Should the Board choose this, and this was the recommendation of the Planning Commission, that they felt that either a strict regulatory ordinance or a ban would be acceptable to the Commission, as long as it was a strict regulatory ordinance. So the provisions of the recommended version from the Planning Commission was that outdoor mixed-lite cultivation would be permitted only in the A1, the Act of General Agriculture, the Ag Preserve AP Zone, and the General Forest GF Zone. Indoor cultivation would be allowed in those zones as well as the industrial zones, M1, M2, and M4. A five-acre minimum parcel size would be allowed for cultivation unless it is adjacent to a residential property, and then it would be a twenty-acre minimum parcel size. There would be a two-hundred-foot setback compared with the seventy-five-foot setback that is currently under the urgency ordinance, unless, no, I'm sorry, two-hundred-foot setback for all outdoor cultivation. And indoor cultivation on industrial zones would be what the standard setback is for that zone district, unless it's adjacent to residential, then the two-hundred-foot setback would also apply. Only growers who successfully register under the current urgency ordinance program would be allowed to get new permits or licenses under this new regulatory program. And those who were successfully registered on lands zoned other than A1, AP, or GF, or the industrial zones, would have the opportunity to relocate their grow to an appropriately zoned piece of property, or apply for a zone change, should it be appropriate to do so. Successful registrants would have a two-year window. They would have to stop cultivation immediately, but they would have a two-year window in which to identify- which to identify, you know, find a new location, clean up their old site, and apply for their permits to move their cultivation site to this new appropriately-zoned location. They must also fully remediate their existing site. The ordinance would also sunset after five years and revert to a total ban for cultivation. They also recommended some stricter standards be applied, including that all cultivation be certified organic, or whatever similar program the state develops for cannabis, that any indoor cultivation be, have filtration carbon or charcoal filtration systems that remove any of the odors from the air that comes out of the buildings, that any hoop houses have covers at night so that we don't have the glow worms across the hillside and the light pollution that's been caused by some of the mixed-lite cultivation, and that if wells are affected, that there's a decrease in well production by 10%, that they would have to reduce their water uses by 50% until they could remediate the program with wells. So those are the recommendations of the planning commission. If you have any questions of me, or the consultants, or council, we'd be happy to entertain them at this point in time. We recommend, however, that we do not get into the details of the ordinance until after the public has had an opportunity to comment, and then we can start, you know, discussing sort of the nitty-gritty of the language of the code itself. So with that, that concludes my presentation, just after 10 o'clock, so we'll take a break and then come back for questions.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be taking a 15-minute break, and then we'll come back.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. I hope everybody's in the lobby.
You're outside, you don't have to be standing.
In all fairness, I'm going to ask somebody to go out and get them. We need to have everybody in here. This is a stakeholder. We'll come back now after staff presentation by Mr. Maurer. We'll bring him back to the board for questions on staff. Board have any questions of Mr. Maurer regarding his presentation? Supervisor Garimendi.
Thank you very much. Peter, thank you very much for all the work that you've done on this for the last 18 or so months, and it was a pleasure to watch the planning commission meeting, and I think that's a very good board, and we should be proud of them. They work well together. I think you guys did a nice job bringing this to us. I don't feel qualified to really judge whether an EIR is adequate or not, but I'm assured by you and staff that we have an adequate EIR. But I did have a couple of questions that, you know, I don't think that will change the adequacy, but I felt like I needed to sort of figure out a little bit. The first one is, obviously, the EIR assumes there's full compliance with the ban. And the first option, it says very clearly, and one of the statements in the EIR was the board finds, or one of the findings was, finds that there's no feasible mitigation resources available that would reduce potential environmental impacts caused by illegal cannabis activities, if such activities were to be, occur in spite of a ban. How do we, how do we, in EIR talk, as people go through the SEQA documents, how do you, are you required just to assume that, hey, if we say no, everybody's just going to jump to attention and do what we say? Why do we do that?
Well, I think that the EIR recognizes that there will be some non-compliance. But as far as the analysis that we have to do, we assume that, we're looking at what the ordinance says, not what people might do in non-compliance of the ordinance. What is the effect of adopting the ordinance? So we will, we will have to find a way to enforce whatever rules are put in place, whether it's regulatory ordinance or ban. And the analysis that is done is, you know, the assumption of compliance is sort of written into the law, that you don't analyze what would happen if someone didn't abide by the mitigation measures. The whole point is saying, these are the things we could do to reduce the impacts. But if we're approving a subdivision map, and there are wetlands that are supposed to be avoided, you know, that's the whole point of identifying what the impact could be and how do you avoid that. If the developer goes ahead and bulldozes through the wetland, that is just purely a violation of the project approval, a violation of the mitigation measure, and there would be, you know, sanctions imposed, you know, on that case. In an ordinance, you look at what are the provisions of the ordinance. And so, you know, comparing the various provisions of the, of different alternatives of an ordinance, including the ban, you know, we've come to the conclusion that not having any cultivation in the county would have less impact than if some cultivation were to occur. Perhaps I could defer a little bit to either Tiffany or to Gary, a little bit more about the legal ramifications or the specifics of SEQA law on that.
So we're, but basically, we're required to assume that we're in a perfect world as we do this stuff?
I don't know that we assume a perfect world, but I think we have to, we have to assume that the ordinance will be applied fairly, and people will abide by the rules of that ordinance. We know that there's going to be some, I mean, just like any ordinance, you know, we have, you know, over 1,000 code cases unrelated to cannabis, that, you know, people violate the code all the time, and that's why we have a code enforcement program. So we know that not all rules are going to be followed. That's why we have law enforcement. But we have to assume in analyzing the impacts of an ordinance, that that is what is going to happen. Otherwise, we're purely speculating, and we don't know how many people are going to break the law. We don't know how many illegal cultivators, you know, might decide to, either to continue to cultivate, or to come here and start cultivating. It just, it would be infeasible for us to speculate on that, at that level.
The, you know, one of the things when we refuse to speculate is we didn't establish a baseline for the study. So, you know, in section 2-11, it didn't recognize the existence of existing, perhaps illegal grows that were already here. And so we assume that we're starting from zero, and we're assuming that everybody will obey, and we'll get back to zero when we say that this is the least environmental impact?
Well, I think we do have a baseline, and that was part of the analysis that we looked at, and I'd like to have Gary respond to that question.
Okay, because in the final EIR, it says that speculation regarding the level of cannabis-related development within the county was deemed inappropriate and could potentially result in understated impacts.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Gary Jacobs with Ascend Environmental. To also put a capstone on what Peter was saying about the issue of speculation, one thing that SEQA requires is that if we get into a situation where there is speculation, that we state so, and then you terminate the discussion. So the issue of compliance under the ban, will people comply? We can't speculate on if people will or will not. We know that there will be a certain amount of non-compliance. It's, there already is non-compliance, but the degree to which that would occur is something that we just can't speculate on. And what we've tried to do in the final EIR is have that dialogue about what, what one could possibly expect, but we're basing our conclusions on compliance with the ban. So that's what the conclusions are based on. As the baseline, the baseline issue is very complicated on this project. Typically, when we work on a project, the baseline's straightforward. We're looking at a subdivision or something like that. We can go out there, we can look at it, we can see that the area is pristine, or partially graded, or whatever, base our existing conditions on that, what we see out in the field, and base the impacts on top of that. Because of the programmatic nature, county-wide nature of the ordinance, we had to take a broader view of what we considered the baseline, and also because the urgency ordinance was being enacted at the time we had already started the EIR, there was a lot of activity going on. So what we assumed in the EIR is that any activities, whether they were ongoing, whether they were existing, or whether they were going to be new activities, could result in the environmental impacts that the EIR articulated, and that the mitigation measures that are in the EIR that would become part of the ordinance would have to be applied on all properties. So even if a property was existing, and under the urgency ordinance had received all of its approvals, the EIR would assume that, let's say for instance, on groundwater effects, that those conditions that would be part of a new ordinance through mitigation measures would be adopted, and that even though it was an existing operation, it was having effects on its neighbor's groundwater, that the mitigation measures in the EIR that would become part of the ordinance would be folded in. It wouldn't be exempted just because they happened to be existing under an urgency ordinance, or perhaps it was an illegal operation that was now coming into compliance.
I have more questions. Thank you. Further questions by the board of staff? Is there any other staff member to present? Sheriff?
Sheriff Di Basilio, I was asked by some board members to give some statistics in regards to the emergency ordinance. Right now, from, I'll give you some stats from this year, and then from when the urgency ordinance was brought into play back in May of 2016 to current. Right now, between Ju-, or excuse me, January 1st of 2017 to October 12th, which was, I believe, last Thursday or Friday, the sheriff's department has spent about $520,000 in salaries just for enforcement and doing eradications. To finish the season out, we're estimating it's going to be about another $150,000. Again, that is just in salaries alone. That doesn't cost out any other equipment. It doesn't cost out the contractor that we've utilized, who we've already spent over $50,000 with. We'll be coming to the board next week to see about raising their monies so that we can continue to utilize that contractor for eradications. Doesn't account for co-compliance, doesn't account for what planning is doing, that's just what sheriff offices spend in salaries alone. The way we set this program up, with, after discussing, discussions with county council and the auditor's office, we have the new marijuana funding program. We've got my guys, my marijuana team, split out. 80% goes to enforcement, 20% goes towards regulation, because most of what they're doing is on the enforcement side. Co-compliance is the one that's working on the regulation side, a little bit more doing the regulatory process. I've been very vocal through Facebook and in the newspaper on when we do eradications, where we're doing the eradications, to show the folks that the sheriff's department is doing everything that they possibly can to eradicate these illegal marijuana grows. Those are the ones that we are going after, and whether this is a registered grow that has been, is out of compliance, didn't pass registration, or whatever, they fall into that illegal grow, so to speak. So these are, these are what we've been going after. Realistically, I was asked how many people I would need, and just to try and get ahead or catch up, I guess, at least five to six more, you're looking at another $600,000 a year, just to give you guys a number. The other thing what we're running into is, we've been working with HR on our injury and illness protection program that I'm sure you're all very aware of. My guys, we've run into some pesticides, that was a big issue. These guys are having to wear proper PPE, personal protective equipment, so that they're protected out on these sites now. Actually talked to Gino here a little bit about that, some issues that he's got going on from the years of dealing with methamphetamine labs and stuff. The things that we're dealing with are not things that we've dealt with in the past in marijuana grows. They seem to be enhanced now. So the guys are having to protect themselves more. It costs the county more money to do that because of the equipment that is needed to do that. The terrain that we work on is not flat like this room. It would be nice if it was, it would be very easy, but most of the time it's not. We're on very steep grades in brush, so there's a lot of things that are needed equipment-wise. We've utilized the road department, somebody else that has a lot of money invested into this program because of the time that they give us with their manpower and the equipment that we use from them. The ground being steep is unsafe. We've had a few twisted ankles. We've had no major injuries, which is, which is a plus. It shows the diligence that the workers that have been out there, but there's still the opportunity and the possibilities of guys getting hurt. You're swinging machetes, we've come across some, and I won't even call them plants, I will call them trees, because the bases of some of these trees are about four to five inches around. They're absolutely huge, so we're having to utilize chainsaws. You start running with chainsaws, I logged for many years in this county back in the 70s and 80s, and you start carrying a chainsaw around in these hills, and slip and fall, hands get cut, legs get cut with chainsaws, so again, more opportunity for injury and illness. And the reason for those quick little stories is that if this is going to continue, we're going to be looking at more costs for helicopters to come in so that they can airlift these things out. We've used Camp, which was Campaign Against Marijuana Production. They still come out and help us. The National Guard has helped us, and it's all, a lot of the equipment gets airlifted out because of the terrain. And I, I don't know for a fact, but my opinion is that if we end up with a ban, which is again up to you folks, Clyde Clapp said it perfectly earlier today. He said, "You guys make the laws, I enforce them." That's why it's called law enforcement. You make the laws, I enforce them. That's my job. If this stuff goes back to being a black market completely, I think we're going to see more grows in the hills, which is going to cause hogback up here behind us in San Andreas for years. Every year we go up there and we've had grows. This year, we didn't have any grows because they've come down in. This year, we didn't have any grows because they've come down into the valley, if you want to call it that, to private property. That's going to force back up into the hills. I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm stating facts. The facts are that the illegal growers are not going to go away. So something to think about. A lot of things that we're starting to see now is they're starting to register personal caregiver grows. We're just now getting into a time when the harvest seasoning is starting to wind down, our weather's changing. These folks are going to start going indoors. It's going to take more time for the sheriff's office to develop a case and co-compliance, to develop a case that this caregiver grow is not just that, a caregiver grow, it is a commercial grow that they're doing inside of the building. It's going to happen in District 1, it's going to happen in District 5, it's going to happen everywhere. We're already seeing it, it takes more time. It's going to take the district attorney a lot more time to process these. So those cases aren't going to go away with a ban or with an ordinance. It's something that we need to think about. It's going to continue. I have talked about this before, I know Barbara Yook, the DA, has talked about this before. Again, whether there's a ban or whether there's a regulatory program, we need to have an investigative team. The district attorney needs to have, and I am advocating for the DA right now, she needs an investigative team. They need another DA that does nothing but marijuana cases. They need a DA investigator, they need the support staff, and we need a forensic accountant that works between the sheriff's offices and the DA to go after these growers that are illegal. If they're all illegal because of a ban, that's fine, we still need that unit because it's going to protect the county in the long run, because they'll be able to go after asset forfeitures. There's a lot of things that person's going to be able to do. Again, more money. Some statistics for you. This year, as of Friday the 13th, January 1st to Friday the 13th of this month, we have seized 11,225 pounds of processed marijuana. We've eradicated 52,589 plants. We have recovered 6.97 pounds of concentrated cannabis. We've recovered 24 guns. We've seized $118,964. We've had 50 arrests, and that's at a total of 53 locations. That's just from January to last Friday. Since this program started in May of 2016, we've destroyed 128,535 plants. We have destroyed 21,803.9 pounds of processed marijuana. We have confiscated 12.87 pounds of concentrated cannabis. We've had eight BHO labs where they're making hash. We have had over 1,051 complaints filed at the sheriff's office. Again, those complaints, you've got to remember the cycle, we've talked about this before. Comes into dispatch, they handle the call, it goes to deputy out on the street, the deputy on the street does his job, then it gets sent over to the marijuana program, or it goes straight to the marijuana program. So it involves a lot of people. We do the arrests, we have arrests out on the street, goes into my jail, puts more people in the jail, needing more staff in jail. It's a big revolving cycle here. There have been, CalFire has issued 38 conversion citations. Fish and Wildlife has issued 97 citations. We have had 33 outside agencies involved in doing these eradications, not including the sheriff's office. We've had a total in that timeframe for may occur in 134 arrests. So it's a busy process. It's going to take a lot of time, it's going to take a lot of money, and again, whether you ban it or whether you regulate it, the illegal activity is going to continue in this county. Don't think that because you ban it, it's going to stop. That's just unrealistic. Anytime there's an opportunity for somebody to make a quick buck, they're going to do that. We're already seeing that with some of the growers that are leaving their illegal grow sites and they're renting homes. I had a home rented next to me not a month ago, and it ended up being an indoor grow and the property owner didn't know. But I advised him of that. That grow is no longer there. I told somebody this story real quick. It was pretty funny because I went over, I saw lights about 11:30 at night, I went out to yell at my dogs because they were barking, my dogs don't bark. So I go out, yell at my dogs, and I see two sets of headlights leave. So I told my wife, I said, "I'm going to go check in the morning, make sure the house wasn't burglarized or not vandalizing," because I know it's been vacant. So I go over there and I hear the humming of the fans and I smell the marijuana, although my area has marijuana grown all over right now, too. So I go over there and I look inside the only window I can see and in the kitchen, and I see a sea of green. So I call the guy up, and I'll remind you, this is at 8 o'clock in the morning. 10 o'clock in the morning, I get a call from his property management company saying what's going on. I tell them. At noon, my wife shoots me a text, "Hey, a black pickup just pulled up and they're loading shit up and they're running." So they left. Again, it's a funny story, but it's not so funny because the problem is that these people are renting homes, they're coming into our community and they're renting homes and they're going to convert the inside of these houses to growing marijuana. Now whether they do it under a caregiver grow or whether they do it just to grow commercially inside of these houses, they're going to come in. Those are going to be harder for the sheriff's department and code compliance to deal with. It's going to take time and it's going to take money. So just keep that in the back of your minds.
Excuse me, folks. Sheriff's make a presentation.
I don't know, you guys are going to talk about dispensaries later. I have some concerns about dispensaries.
That will be the next gen, gen 12.
I will wait on that then. Staffing, that was the other one. I was asked about my staffing. Right now, I have eight empty deputy positions. That includes Tom Oldham that just retired. I had seven, now I'm up to eight. I have three gentlemen in the academy right now that'll be graduating in November. If, and again, this doesn't go with whether it's a ban or regulation, I'm going with what you folks do. If you continue with my marijuana team, my marijuana enforcement team, I will have those eight positions. I have three coming out of the academy, I'm looking at recruiting two more, that would give me five to put back into those positions, I would still have three vacant positions. If for some reason you dissolve my marijuana enforcement team, that means that the five gentlemen that are in that program right now, I have the lieutenant that you folks just gave me to oversee the marijuana program and investigations. You'll have to decide what you want to do with that lieutenant. If you want to leave him in investigations, that would be fantastic. If not, we'll have to figure out what we're going to do with him. I have a sergeant in the marijuana team. Again, he's there to help supervise his men right on the streets. If the Met team goes away, you have to decide what you want to do with him. And then I have three deputies that will go back to the streets. So if you take the lieutenant and sergeant out, that puts three people back in, that leaves me five positions. And if I have the three coming out of the academy and I pick up the other true recruits, that means I'm full. That means that you're going to have to either give me more positions or the sheriff's office doesn't have anymore. Even at that point, I'm still going to be about seven positions under where we were staffing-wise in 2003. The marijuana calls are going to continue to come in, and we are going to continue to deal with them because that's our job as law enforcement. We will go out and handle the calls. What you're going to see, and I want the citizens to understand this, is that if I do not have a marijuana team, and I hate to put the pressure on you guys this way, but if I don't have a marijuana team out there doing what they're doing, and again, you see what the stats that we've been doing and people are hearing what we're doing, if that team is not there, the process is going to continue, but it's going to be drastically reduced because these guys are going to be on patrol now, they're not going to be a specialized team. It takes, and Mike, you know, it takes time to get a search warrant put together because if there's a ban in effect, then it's a flat-out criminal issue. That means they have to do the investigative process, they have to do all their groundwork, they have to put a search warrant together, a search warrant has to go to the DA, get approved by the DA, then has to go to a judge for the judge to sign it. Takes about two weeks. That's on the short side, depending on what's going on. If you do, if you do a regulation, that still doesn't change. That process doesn't change, we're still going to have the illegal growers. So again, I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just telling you, the timeline is the same no matter what you do for the sheriff's office. Again, law enforcement, that's what we do. Along with the deputies, I have two full-time staff working with the marijuana team. They do the statistics, they do callbacks, they do an array of things for the deputies so that saves them time and lets them get out in the streets more. Those are two full-time staffers that would be laid off. If for some reason I could convince you that if you made my marijuana team go away, I have positions for them in the department in other areas that I can absolutely utilize them in. We have four part-timers that would also be laid off. That's my staffing. That's where we're at right now. Any questions?
Questions of the sheriff by the board, supervisor, Gary Mendy.
Sheriff, thank you very much for the work that your Met team's been doing. It's had an impact, and I appreciate the fact that you've been very public about what you guys are doing. I think that helps a great deal. So by my math, you're able to take those nine Met team positions, assuming if this board decides to go with the ban and you lose those Met team funding, you could put them back in your department. So we're not, most of them back in your department minus the four specialists and we have to figure out what to do with the lieutenant and the sergeant. But you will have less cops, bottom line.
Realistically, yes. Yeah, in the overall picture, yes, because the positions that are vacant right now will be filled by the Met team, so I will not be able to hire those other people to bring them in.
Right, so you have a net loss of manpower.
Yes.
In your experience, how is it, have you been seeing, I mean, there's clearly a lot of crime, and thank you for knocking it down, but regulated, compliant versus illegal growers? What would you say the breakdown is between the two in crime statistics?
I actually have a presentation that Captain Macedo and some of the Met team people put together. And the statistics, just from what I remember, the illegal growers actually are obviously a lot higher in calls for service or complaints that we're getting and the amount of cases that we're putting on them. The registered growers are down on the totem pole, we're not having the amount of complaints. A lot of the, more the complaints that we get on the registered growers is that, are they a registered grower? We go out and we check, and they're either in compliance or they're not, and we deal with them at that point. But we're not having the problems with the registered growers as we are the obviously illegal growers.
Sheriff, you know my district very well.
I do.
I appreciate that. What is the, is my community safer or less, safer or less safe under a ban?
I don't know that that's a question I can really answer. I, you know, it's, I know that we've had a lot of, there are so many illegal growers in your district, and again, I don't know that with a ban or with regulation whether that's going to change. I think that if you, if you ban it, I still think your illegal growers are going to be there. I truly believe that you're going to probably see more influx of illegal growers coming into the county. With a ban or with regulations, and I got to say, a lot of the registered growers have been eyes and ears for us. They do give us information saying, "Hey, this guy's doing this, they're an illegal grower." So they are helping us in that aspect. It's just like having, citizens in the community that call us and say, "Hey, this house is over here, it's vacant, there's not supposed to be anybody there." They call us and let us know so we can go over there and do the investigation and find out, okay, is somebody breaking into the house or are there people moving into the house? There are only so many of us. Obviously, I could tell you that by our stats. We rely on the public to give us that extra information to let us know. The young lady that was having her conversation with Mr. Clapp, she should have called the sheriff's office. If she hasn't, I would like her to talk to me and find out what's going on. If crime rate has gone up in Rancho Calabres, I'd certainly like to know. My statistics don't show that, but we need the public. So back to answering your question, the public is going to give us that information. If people are doing things illegally, the registered growers are helping us. If there's no registered growers up there, then it's all on us and the public. I don't know what the answer is. Honestly, is it going to get worse or better for your district? I think, somebody talked about that earlier. I can't predict what's going to happen.
But we do know that we're going to have illegal growers going on, and you will have less manpower to enforce the law.
That is a fact.
That is, that is a fact. So I will assume that that would make my community less safe if there's less deputies. And I know I was speaking to some folks, we're dealing in real estate and inquiries, we're actually going up as to land purchases because of a potential ban, because they can do the math as well, and they know there'll be less deputies patrolling district, too, knocking these guys out.
Well, I will tell you that in the plan that I've submitted to Mr. Lutz, you know, like I said, I'm a businessman, I did a five-year plan, and my plan is to bring my staffing level back up to where I can have more deputies out on the street, which means I have more coverage, so the calls for service times go down. It just, it enhances everything. If the marijuana team goes away, one way or the other, if the marijuana team goes away, that's going to take longer to get back up to the numbers that I want. And that's going to mean I have to come back to the board, and I'm going to come back to you anyhow, whether the marijuana team stays in place or not, I need more people down the road. That's the whole program, is to get more people on the, out on the streets to protect the citizens that are sitting behind me, both sides of the coin. My job is to protect everybody. I cannot play favors to one side or the other. My job is to protect human life and property, that's what I'm going to do.
You guys, your team is making a great effort at chipping away at this big rock, the illegal grows. Before we funded, I think we'll all agree, we're never going to get rid, we're never going to get to 100% of getting rid of all the bad guys. If there was, we'd all sing kumbaya and it'd be great. But that's not reality, and we're dealing with reality. If you were funded and we continued this Met team and we gave you more funding, timeline, how long do you get it under control?
I've said it before, with the, with the right amount of people, give me three to four years and we'll have a good handle on it. Again, I have to be realistic that you will never get a handle on getting rid of everybody. I mean, holy cow, we've had legalized alcohol for how many years and there's still bootleggers?
Sure.
So it's not going to go away. If there's a, if there's a dollar to be made, people that are going to do things illegally are going to go after it. It doesn't matter what you're doing. I mean, it's legal to buy cars and people still have chop shops. It doesn't matter. The illegal element is there, they're going to, they're going to make a quick buck. But three to four years, and I think that we'll have a really good handle on it. I think that in this community would feel very safe.
Thank you. That's, that's my primary goal is to have a safe community up in country, and without your deputies, it's not going to be safe.
Well, the other thing I know, and I don't know, I haven't talked to Rebecca Callen about the funding that's left from the Measure C funds, how much money is left. I know that there was a little over $7 million brought in. I know we used a lot of it to balance the budget. If for some reason the board chooses a ban, I would like to see at least $3 to $4 million of that set aside so that we can keep the marijuana team in play.
All right, well, I think most of that's already accounted for in our budget. I'm sure we'll get to budget discussions later.
And I could be talking out of turn, I don't remember, how much of that was left spent?
We've encumbered all those dollars.
Have we? Okay. Well, find a tree.
Any other board member, questions of the sheriff? I have a couple of questions, Sheriff. You mentioned in your presentation that you have outside agencies assisting you. In fact, I think the number was 33, is that what you stated?
Yeah.
Is there any cost associated to county for that, those outside agencies?
No.
And how do we get them?
Beg, plead, and borrow. Ask for help. The environmental crimes that were involved brought in DWR, brought in Fish and Wildlife, CalFire, so they've assisted. The problem is, as we well know throughout the state, they're having the same issue The problem is, as we well know throughout the state, they're having the same issue in a lot of other areas, a lot of other counties, so they can't be specific to stay with us. The National Guard came in and helped us. We've had help from a lot of agencies that I'm aware of, we haven't been charged for anything other than the contractor that we've hired to help do the eradications, for actually hauling this stuff away for us, because we have trailers to haul it on the smaller grows, when we get these larger grows, we have to have outside help.
You did cover the issue of if we go to a ban situation, it's gonna reduce our ability to respond to calls for service as a whole throughout the county?
No, 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 the ban doesn't have anything to do with calls for service, that's not gonna change. What I was getting at is that, I'm trying to get my staffing built up so we can reduce those calls for service, and realistically, the calls for service with a ban might go up a little bit, or the timelines might go down a little bit, I guess I should say, because we'll have those other deputies back on the streets. But the problem is, the call volume for the illegal grows is gonna go up, because now everybody's gonna have illegal grows next to them. If I know that his is a legal grow now, now it becomes illegal, he continues to grow, now my deputies have to respond there. So it's gonna, there's gonna be more calls for service, so in essence, there is gonna be an impact. And again, we go back to that vicious cycle, now I have more calls going into dispatch, because every grow in the county is an illegal grow, so those calls are gonna go up, our arrests are gonna go up, that means they're gonna have more people in jail, which means I'm gonna need more correctional officers, again, it's that big vicious cycle.
And I have to, I don't wanna appear like I'm giving you a baited question here, but I'm gonna give you a baited question.
Swell.
And I can only do that by personal experience. There was a time, long, long ago, on a land far, far away, I wore a badge and a gun in the county of Calaveras County, and I worked the street as a patrol deputy. When calls for service increase, and manpower is reduced, or available manpower, person power, I stand corrected, which beat gets stripped of that beat officer to handle the calls for other associated crimes in the remaining districts?
Well, our county's-
Where does that actually occur?
Oh, absolutely. Our county is split up into quarters, the way we have it at the sheriff's office. So, you're gonna, you're gonna go to the busiest area, Valley Springs is one of the busiest areas that we have in the county, so that's gonna strip Mr. Guerra Mendy of some personnel up there, because if we have more calls down there, they're gonna be down in the Valley Springs, because there's more population, there's more people, there's more things going on. You go to the other side of the county, Arnold is typically a little bit busier than Copper, but not always, it's just, that's kind of flip-flops back and forth depending on the But the bottom line is, if we're short in manpower, women power, as we have women deputies, people power as you put it, there's gonna be a staff shortage. Calls for service are gonna take longer to get to, because we don't have the manpower.
And those calls for service are categorized in a manner that you respond to the most serious dangerous crimes first, correct?
It's like going to the hospital, the worse you are, the more attention you get.
You mentioned some other agency involvement. I noticed that you mentioned the forensic analysis or forensic investigator. Can you tell me the need for that?
Well, again, to chase that money trail, these marijuana growers are working, dealing with cash, we know they can't use banks at this point, state's working on changing that too, I guess. But to be able to prove that that money has come from an illicit source in order to do an asset forfeiture on their property, their cars, boats, whatever, it takes time, and it takes somebody who is very knowledgeable in that field. That's a specialized field, it's like being a homicide investigator. It takes time, and it takes somebody who has that expertise. And again, that's something that Barbara Yook and I have talked about, having that housed in the DA's office, that it benefits the county, because now you're able to do those asset forfeitures. I've had numerous people ask me, well, why aren't you doing asset forfeitures? Well, it's time-consuming as heck, we don't have the manpower to do it, and it's a specialized thing, it takes a lot of work, and that person would be dedicated to doing just that.
Just for the information, education of the public, how much money does the agency involved in the actual arrest or investigation receive off an asset forfeiture project or crime?
I, that, I don't actually know the answer to that.
Word has been disseminated that it's about 25% of the total asset.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Is that number familiar?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Is that, is that a source of revenue toward, for the county or for the sheriff?
Oh, absolutely. Well, I know that some of it would go to the DA, some would go to the sheriff's office, I don't know how much the county gets out of that.
Now, million-dollar question. You provided data on crime statistics, do you know what that data is based on? Non-reported crimes?
This isn't, these weren't crime statistics, these were marijuana statistics that I quoted today, and those are hard numbers that I got from my marijuana team.
Okay, so you don't, you don't have any data on the reported crimes investigated so far?
I didn't bring those, I do have them, I actually had them for another presentation that had not been done, but I do have those statistics, I don't have them right now.
Would you agree that there is a situation in this county where you have circumstances or incidents that are non-reported crimes?
Oh, absolutely. I hear people telling me all the time, hey, this happened, did you hear about it? It's like, no, I have no idea, because it was never reported to the sheriff's office. I know our crime statistics have gone up, obviously our homicides, everybody's talked about that, homicides have gone up, burglaries have gone up, armed robberies have gone up, thefts have gone up, I do have those statistics. Actually, in 2015, they were here, in 2016, they were here, and actually in 2017, they have come back down a little bit. That part I can tell you, I can't tell you the exact numbers, but I know that they have gone up, and they have come back down as of current 2017 times.
Is there any, to your crime analysis through your department, is there any indication to see if those crimes are marijuana-related, or are those crimes in general?
Those are crimes in general, I do have them broken out between marijuana-related and not. The problem is, it's kind of skewed, because if we, if we catch a kid or somebody who steals a candy bar out of our valve store and it happens to have marijuana on them, then marijuana gets put into that, so it's marijuana-related, because they had marijuana on them, doesn't mean it was a cause of the crime, but just means it's marijuana, so there, it's hard to track that specific, I guess. If marijuana's related, then marijuana's related, but I do have those statistics.
Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate it.
Mr. Mills?
Supervisor Guerra Mendy? I'm sorry, Supervisor Mills.
Yeah, Sheriff, I think funding the Met Team needs to be a separate discussion from what we're talking about today. You will be available for questions later?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here for the whole show.
Supervisor Guerra Mendy?
Yeah, I actually don't think that funding the Met Team is a separate discussion, I think it's very germane to a ban or not a ban. It has been suggested that the way that we could fund a Met Team in law enforcement is by finding efficiencies in county government. Are there any efficiencies in the sheriff's office that are gonna allow us to hire more people? How can we squeeze you? And since that has been proposed as an option, Sheriff?
I think we've been squeezed pretty tight already, I know that when we started the budget processes here, Mr. Lutz and I talked about some unfunded positions, and I was very willing to give that money back, if you wanna call it that, I mean, it's not my money, it's the county's money, but we pulled that out of our budget so that we could make ends meet in other areas. And I don't have a problem with that, as long as I get that money back when I have my people in place. These seven positions, eight positions that I have right now, those are unfunded, they're funded positions, but they're unfilled, so if the board needs them to support somebody else, that's fine and dandy, but once those positions are filled, I need to know that that money's there so that I can protect the citizens of the community. I don't know that you're gonna squeeze any more juice out of the orange, so to speak. We've, I mean, you can talk to Captain Macedo, he was, you know, doing budgets for many years now with the sheriff's department, and they squeezed every bit that they can, everywhere they can, they cut all line items, we've cut as much as we can, we're just now starting to get back online to where we can actually start doing things again, and not feel so much of a crunch. I mean, you could talk for days about, we're still talking about people that are leaving. I've got three correctional officers that look back, they're gonna leave because of more pay that they go to CDC for, so that's another issue, that, you know, I don't know if you wanna talk about that now or not, it's just, money is the root of all evil, always has been, always will be, unfortunately.
And you've got deputies that are underpaid already, as we're looking at Stockton's hiring, what, 50 new police officers, and paying considerably more than our deputies. Those vehicles, I've written along, and vehicles are close to 200,000 miles on them.
Yeah, they're getting up there. Stanislaus County just opened up a new jail, and he's, he's working on, Adam Christensen, the sheriff down there is working on hiring another 245 guys, and finding qualified applicants is not an easy task. I mean, we're going to the academy, and I think I mentioned this last year at budget time, we had a recruit in the academy who was working for us, and went to Lowdy, in the middle of the academy, you know, I mean, typically, you know, Mike knows, if you go through the academy and you're getting sponsored by somebody, you stay there. Well, Lowdy says, hey, we're gonna give you more money plus a bonus for coming over to us, and so he jumped ship.
Wow, sorry about that. And that's not only the academy that's occurring in, that's occurring in your correctional officers academies?
Yeah.
It's corrected, it's actually happening all over law enforcement?
It is, they, I mean, rural counties have typically been lower paid, they go from here, they go down to the valley, and they go from the valley to Hayward, Bay Area, I mean, there's just, they're, the people are chasing the mighty dollar, I mean, you know, they have a 30-year, and I don't blame them, they have a 30-year career or so that they need to survive and make money for their family, so they're gonna go where the money is. I mean, we have the benefit of a great community to live in, we really do. I mean, I've been up here my, pretty much my whole adult life, and I'm still here for a reason, because I like it, but the younger generation is chasing the money, more than the lifestyle, I think.
Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate your comments.
I'll be back.
Is there any other staff member that wish to present? Ms. Callen, I want to thank you for responding, I made that request.
Thank you. Rebecca Callen, Auditor Controller, there was some conversation earlier while I was listening regarding how much Measure C funding there is left, and the reality is Measure C is not a segregated fund. It comes into the general fund, it came into the general fund into the non-departmental budget unit last fiscal year, it's doing the same this fiscal year. So, when, last fiscal year, we received over $5 million in Measure C tax money, that money was used to close the budget, it was used to allow us to not transfer teeter funds in to balance the budget, it was used to fill that gap for, the stopgap with regards to revenue, and it was why we were able to close the year with a little over $3 million in cash carry. When the budget was built, the administrative office obviously uses that $3 million, and they use whatever revenues are gonna be budgeted in this fiscal year in order to build the budget, and that's what the Board of Supervisors passed earlier in the fall. There was a little over $2 million of Measure C funds that were budgeted in the 1718 fiscal year, and every dollar, every penny of that is budgeted. There is not some sort of, you know, pot of Measure C money sitting off to the side awaiting to be allocated by the board. You allocated all of it when you passed the budget for 1718 final. The only money that is sitting aside in a separate fund is the regulatory money, and that also was included in the, in the budget, I think it was a little over $2.7 million, was included in the 1718 budget, and that also was allocated and approved by the Board of Supervisors for expenditures related to the current urgency ordinance that is in effect as of this moment. That, from, yes, until the 14th of February. Included in that budget was staff for the sheriff's department, staff for code compliance, ag department, et cetera, et cetera, so all of that has been allocated. So there is no other money associated with cannabis that's sitting off to a side awaiting allocation, it has all been allocated with expenditures. Any questions?
Supervisor Guerra Mendy, questions?
Thank you very much, Erica, for coming up, and this is kind of a question for you, both you and Cia Lutz, but you mentioned, you know, we've allocated all of Measure C money, I know we used it last year to balance out our books in June. What is the current structural hole in the county budget?
Well, it doesn't seem like it's really been changing, I can't recall off the top of my head what had been budgeted last fiscal year for stopgap for teeter, but I wanna say it was, do you recall, Tim, was it close to 3? I can't remember if last year was 1.8 or if it was-
In terms of how much teeter was-
How much teeter was budgeted for last fiscal year?
Yeah, I think it was about 3 million, 3.1 million that was budgeted last year.
Yeah, so, things have not changed substantially between last year and this year, you know, unfortunately, our expenditures are going up, staffing being one of our largest expenditures, so purse costs are going up, so we were happy to see that 8% increase in assessed values from the assessor, which then correlates into an increase for our property tax revenue for the entire county, and every taxing jurisdiction was thrilled to see that. Unfortunately, all of our costs also increased, probably to the tune of about the same amount.
So we used roughly $3-plus million of teeter funds to last year's budget?
We did not have to. We used, we used Measure C instead.
Right, so we didn't have to use the one-time funds?
Yes.
What is, what is the total structural deficit?
Based on crunch numbers and an estimate, and this is outside of the cannabis program, so I'm, when I'm looking at the urgency ordinance program, when I'm looking at the enforcement program, I'm looking at it as a separate matter since it's-
Right.
Right now at this point, tied, either directly or indirectly, to the urgency ordinance, would be 5.142 million for a structural deficit.
And so we add in, was it, and we throw in cannabis enforcement?
The estimate then, 7.29.
So 7.29 for, is what we'd require to stay status quo? That's our deficit of where we are today?
Essentially, yes, operating as we are today in the absence of the Measure C funds.
What would we do without the Measure C funds?
Well, at that point, it would be a policy decision as to where budgetary reductions would need to occur. Obviously, and I know the county's familiar with going through the exercise with looking at departmental budget lines to trim any contracts or non-essential types of activities or services, the next step beyond that would have to be a staffing reduction.
So we would, if we didn't have Measure C funds, we would, and we would eliminate the Met Team and all the enforcement activities around that, which would reduce us to about that 5.14, which would be cutting past the bone at that point, we'd be getting into bodies.
Yes, we would be cutting staff positions, assuming again, you couldn't find the $5 million elsewhere within the general funded department budgets.
Mm-hmm, and the 5.1, those are all general fund discretionary dollars, mostly, correct? Would be where the debt, where we'd have to make it up out of discretionary general fund dollars?
This is specifically to the general funded departments, yes.
And who are the, who is the largest funded, what is our greatest expense in the general fund?
The sheriff.
The sheriff, so that would, they would be cut?
And sheriff and jail, which, again, under the sheriff's department, those are the largest general funded departments.
So Sheriff, it's not just your Met Team?
And we, Sheriff DeVassilio and I had a discussion about that, because, I go, what do we do? The, the reality is- what do we do? The, the reality is there is a huge amount of discretionary money that was included in this '17, '18 fiscal year that if, and I'm not saying go one way or the other, I'm just saying you have to come up with money from somewhere. So, you know, and I think what's important to understand is just the history of, of the county. We never, I don't feel like this county ever recovered from the recession. We really didn't. And when we started to feel recovery happening, but fire came. And so any recovery that we had thought was happening went up in flames, if you will. So the problem is, we all have cut, we, every single one of our departments has cut to the bone. We, we have gone without staffing increases. We have, we've gone through each of our line items, and it, and we started kind of feeling like maybe we were making a turn for the better, and we were going to actually start recovering like many counties were, and then but fire happened, and then tree mortality, and then winter storm. And so, you know, unfortunately, it's not like we're coming off of a, a period of time where we were living high off the hog. We were coming off of a period where we were already kind of scraping by with the little that we had. So the reality is there, there would be a huge hole. How that gets filled, I think it's just important that the board understands that has to be filled, because the reality is it is staffing. You're, you're not going to save this much money on cutting office supplies. We don't have that much in our budgets for that. So the, the issue is, you know, we really did balance this budget on the backs of that Measure C money. And we, you know, if you, if you kind of stand back and look at what just got approved at the '17, '18 year budget, I, I think everything that happened was for, it was good that, you know, we did those things, but there's not a recurring funding source. The money that the board approved to go to the fire districts, the, that has to come from discretionary money to backfill for the sheriff's department, the money for the Economic Development Director, the OES Director. All of those, all of those positions and all of those expenditures are coming from discretionary money that we potentially aren't going to have going forward.
So Office of Emergency Services, pretty important for a county like ours.
It's vitally, vitally important. I mean, we, we struggled through but fire, and we've struggled through tree mortality, and we've struggled through winter storm, and I would hate to see us go back to, to anything less than what we're trying to aspire to because we really have, we've really struggled with those.
And I would assume that we, if we move forward with a, with the proposed ban, we would have to make these decisions post-haste, because I assume we've got contractual relationships with our unions and others, and we'd have to tie in that belt right away.
Everything would have to happen very quickly. You know, basically, you know, when we've run into situations like this where we are coming up severely short with revenue, we look to teeter. Unfortunately, as you heard at the board meeting, I believe last week, we also have cash flow issues because of the fact that the, this country has been under siege with declared emergencies every which way till Sunday, whether it's fire or whether it's hurricanes. And so the help that we thought that we were going to get from FEMA and CALOES, I think is either not going to come, or there's going to be situations where it will come, but it just won't come soon. And we've got to figure out how we're going to make those funding decisions and, and cash flow. And so when we're looking at that, you know, teeter is really where we would get, teeter and some other internal funds that are restricted, but that we do have the availability to borrow against from a short-term standpoint. We can use those funds for borrowing purposes only, but then you, it's, it seems like we just have a lot of very competing, very serious, very short-term decision-making issues that are all kind of facing us at the same time.
So the consequences are profound for whatever we do today?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, we came into this year's budget with how many open positions?
I am not sure. That would be a question for HR.
Okay. Fully funded positions that were not filled, going, I mean, the book's laying at home. I didn't put it in the trunk of my car this morning.
Many, uh-
But the, I'd, I'd like to know what that total amount of money that was allocated that's not being spent because we have positions that are open and unfilled.
I do know many of the positions were, many of the positions are not general fund. And then of the general fund ones, several of them were either grant-funded or restricted, restricted funding sources. So would you want to, or just to focus on the ones that are being funded with discretionary dollars?
Uh, discretionary is where we have the most amount of control, as you know. But I would like to know what that, that total number of positions is and what that total amount represented in the budget, not necessarily just discretionary.
But we can't spend, we can't spend the funds-
I understand that.
On restricted-
I understand that.
Funding sources.
I'm just looking for the total.
I, I don't necessarily have what the, what the historical point in time on budget was, but I can tell you right now how many vacant positions we have, because I got a report this morning from HR.
Okay.
At this point, we have 69 vacant positions across the county. Roughly 48 of those positions are in general funded departments.
Okay.
Now, when I, I'll, I'll fix a caveat to that. As we know from the budget hearings in June, it's difficult to, you have certain programs or departments that we call general funds, such as probation, that also have a fairly heavy amount of state and federal dollars in there. So it's not always going to be a dollar-for-dollar comparison to say reduction, but I know that 48 of those positions are in general funded departments, which total compensation for those positions, for those general funded positions equates to roughly $3.682 million.
Thank you. Ms. Callen, you mentioned the financial cost of struggling through the but fire. Could you quantify that number for us?
The total expenditures?
Yes.
To date?
Yes.
Um, I don't remember what it was, I don't know what it is this very moment because I haven't looked at it in the last few weeks, but I think it was close to 11-point-something million dollars.
I had heard something about 10.1 in our last meeting. Is that still pretty close?
Yeah, we had, we had updated that. We had some additional expenditures.
Okay. Next, I, I know the sheriff's budget last year, for this year in the budget is 15.2 million. If we looked at the AB 109, AB 443, and other designated fund reserves, which are reserves available to the sheriff, can you give us a total amount of those fund reserves at this point?
I don't-
Or could you bring that back to us?
Could you bring it back? And you're looking for AB 109 and 443?
Well, you'd mentioned to me, I think last, this last spring, about 4.6 million was sitting in those fund reserves?
Um, we'd have to look at it. It would have been part of the budget packet that went to the board as well.
Right. I'm just trying to be sure that we have a full scope of what the budgetary situation is for, is available for the sheriff's department. If we start cutting into, we still have some other reserves that are sitting out there that could potentially be used if we, if they needed to be used.
Uh, 44, well, 443 and 109 both house the planting language, so you wouldn't be able to supplant.
It's not a hundred.
And then 109 is highly, highly restricted with regards to what it can do, and it's actually the CCP that makes the recommendations as to how those funds would be spent. The AB 443 is a fund that the sheriff's departments, generally, it's a, it's a rural sheriff's grant that they get that's there to supplement law enforcement services. So historically, what the sheriff's department's been doing is purchasing capital, capital costs out of their equipment, but I can bring you that balance.
Yeah, I think that we need to know how much is available in reserves, not so much for probation or for other pieces, which also take AB 109 funds as well, but just to know what that total reserve capacity is as we look at our decision. Lastly, if we could take all of the marijuana-funded positions, and I'm not talking just about the sheriff's department, the code enforcement, environmental health, everybody who has put a position into this pie, could you come up with the total of all of those marijuana positions and how much funded, how much they were funded in, say, last year's budget?
Um, I'd have to look. I know what was funded, funded for this budget was the entire balance of the 2.7 million, which included all of those positions funded for the full fiscal year.
Yes, I was familiar with this year because we'd had that conversation, but I also wanted to look at last year to see what that trending was, of whether we, you know, what, what we had funded actually in there versus what did we end up with, if that's possible. And that's all I have. I probably have some further questions later. Thank you.
So that information we can get after lunch?
Yeah, I can go.
Would that work, Ms. Callen?
Um, I have one other-
Supervisor Toffenelli.
Yes.
Toffenelli, I'm sorry.
George, I have one other number that I would like you to bring if you're going to come back with those numbers, is we appropriated funding for the winter storms damage and for tree mortality, that those programs we may not this year be able to get into, as you were speaking of FEMA and State OES. Can you bring back the figures of how much that appropriated money is in those, for those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any board questions of Ms. Callen, further questions, or staff questions of Ms. Callen?
Sure, I'd like to call not to Ms. Callen, but maybe you know how it's, if you follow.
Ms. Callen, would it be possible if we could call on you again?
Yeah.
Later today?
Yep.
I hate to interrupt your schedule, but this is a pretty important issue.
And if I could add, I, I looked up as we were sitting here, it was, we were both, it was a little off on where we were on the, the actual urgency ordinance is 2.059, not 2.7, I know. I was thinking it too, so we're both having a moment.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for responding.
2.059 was what was remaining at, at year close, which then was budgeted for this year.
Sheriff, you have comments you want to make?
Okay. Nope.
And just so you know, Rebecca and I get along great. And we really do. And that's, I'm not being facetious. We actually resolve our problems. She went to Bret Hart, I came from Calaveras. It's just a difference of opinions. In answer to your question, Sheriff Olivera, asset forfeiture costs, sheriff's office gets 65%, district attorney gets 10%, state gets 24%, and CDAA gets 1%.
I knew somebody got 25% out of that.
Well, you were close, 24. And for clarification, Mr. Mills, the marijuana positions that you're talking about, you got to remember that because of the restructuring of the program and the way funds were being devied out, that 2-point-some-odd million dollars that's still left, left in that account is monies for regulatory processes. 80% is coming out of general fund for my marijuana team, because most of what they're doing, 80% of what they're doing, is coming out of the enforcement side. So that's not monies that's available out of that fund. That was, remember, the description, the discrepancy that Rebecca and I had at one point.
Yeah, and, and to your point, I, I did write your 80% number down.
Okay.
Is trying to understand exactly what are your true costs for marijuana-related activities. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's related to the application process. It might be because of enforcement, prosecution, or arresting, or whatever you're doing that is not part of the application process, and that we need to know what those numbers are as well.
Okay, well, the, the problem with that is the district attorney hasn't been involved in any of this. She's not receiving any funds whatsoever out of the regulatory program because that wasn't part of the process. And as far as the extra work that they're doing and the extra help that they're getting to process and prosecute the marijuana side, there's no way for her to track that because it, it's all over the board. She's got so many different people doing so many different things, some related to marijuana, some not. And because she's not needing to track that, it's just a prosecution for her. So, and I don't want to speak for her, but the, some of the conversations that I've had with her, it's, it's hard for her to track that.
Maybe the better question to ask of you, sir, is, is tell me what the number is on non-prop 26.
Well, and that's what I just told you earlier. Just this year alone, okay, from June of '16 to January of '17, just in salaries, we spent $330,000 on labor alone for the marijuana enforcement.
And that's not Prop 26?
That's not Prop 26.
Okay.
That was Measure C funds that we used for. Between January and October 12th, we used $520,000. So basically, you're looking at, you know, a, a year, a year and a half's worth of gross season, and it's cost you $950,000, damn near a million dollars. And it's going to, it will top over a million dollars for those two seasons. That's just in salaries alone, non-prop 26 funding.
Because we have to understand what is, what is regulatory under the application process?
Right.
And what's not Prop 26?
Right.
As we discussed before, we need to have that total number and an understanding of that total number when we go forward.
Oh, there's your number, a million dollars.
Got it written down right here.
Okay. And then, you, you brought up my AB 443 money. I get a little touchy with AB 443 money. That's nondiscretionary money that the county, or that the state gives the sheriff, rural sheriff's departments to use for what they've needed. There is an account that has been set aside that I will give Captain Macedo all the credit for. He's been putting money aside from that. And back in 2009, there was some cuts that were going to be made, and Sheriff Downham at the time took those funds, and Mr. Toffenelli is very aware of this, Sheriff Downham took those funds and was paying salaries out of those funds, which he can do. That's, it's nondiscretionary money. So since 2009, we've been using, we have four positions tied to AB 443 money. You folks gave me that money back this year so that I can use it for what we need it for. We did our RIMS information program. It's a computer program, costs $500,000. We paid for that out of 443 money, so it wasn't an impact to the county. We've purchased vehicles this year out of those monies, so there's not an impact to the county. If you start taking that money and saying, hey, this is nondiscretionary money, we can use it for other things, you're going to kill me. You're going to kill the sheriff's department. Those are funds that we can utilize for some of the things that you all can't give us. Don't take my 443 money, please.
Well, you remember that when we were talking in negotiations earlier in the year, that I had asked a question of what percentage of reserve funds would be reasonable for your department? And so that still has to be in the conversation. As you look at a budget, you have to also say, well, what have I got in the bank, and what have I got, you know, where is the, where is the cash available or going to be available? It's got to be part of that decision. And so I don't want to extend this conversation. I'm just trying to be sure that every, there's a clear understanding that there are reserve funds, not that they need to be used right now, but we just need to know they're there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Is there any other staff member that wish to present on this agenda item? I have a request. Mr. Short, may I approach the podium, please? I have questions regarding code compliance. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Ed Short, who is in charge of our building, our department which code compliance is part of. Mr. Short, how's your staffing right now regarding the marijuana team?
Well, we have three dedicated code enforcement officers just in for cannabis. If you look at the budget, we have some part, part-time, which equates to about 5.6, 5.7 FTE. The cannabis budget has been transferred over to CIO's office. This next year, we budgeted approximately about 900, I think, Tim, maybe about a million dollars. That includes about four or 500,000. I don't have all the numbers, but $500,000 in staffing, about $500,000 in abatement costs. So we haven't approached on that because I came to the board for the contracts with the two, about a half million. But we're getting a lot of self-abatement processes, which I have posted a lot of statistics in what we're doing on the website, and I think I handed it to the board earlier and the staff. If, this is what we have done as of, well, again, Friday the 13th, same numbers. This doesn't include, include the criminal parts that we- doesn't include the criminal parts that we eradicate, this is the part for the emergency ordinance, the regulatory side of it. If you look at the data, it's pretty impressive. We've had county orders of abate about 30, county abated about 19, volunteer abatement's 159 through the whole process. Process cannabis is about 220 pounds, not the same as the sheriffs that are in there doing a whole lot more criminal. The approximate county abated plant count is 21,491 plants. Approximate volunteer plant count is 23,028. The total plant count is 44,419 plants, that's huge. And the approximate fines through their administrative hearing process is about $551,000 as we speak right now. The citations per district, in District 1, we have 42 citations, again, District 2, 120, District 3, 10, District 4, 25, District 5, 25, split border lines about 2, that's 224 total citations on, so far, have we asked today? And this is just ramping up. Right now, what the staff are doing right now, it is a huge workload to go back and start doing the re-inspections for the registered grows, we're just starting to do that. What is left there is, once we do the eradication, we have a lot of existing code violations, which is a regular code abatement, we're going to be starting to roll that out, but that's, we only have really one person, part-time, working on that, which does take quite a bit of time to get back there. We've calculated about 150 sites that we have to go back to, we have, we're going to try to go after maybe about 20 this year. That equates to about $2.1 million of abatement process that we had calculated, about $14,000 per site, just to go clean up after the eradications. We predict that 150 might take two to three years, maybe, to try to go back to do it. So we're just starting to roll out that program, along with the emergency ordinance regulation. So hopefully that kind of gives you an update of what we're doing. I feel the staff is really good staff, they work really well with the sheriffs. We've done combined criminal and standby, so it's a really good system working now, I think we're getting the bugs out of it, and we're moving forward with more eradications as we speak right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. Sir, how is your department funded?
It's right now an enterprise fund, which means on the non-abatement side for cannabis, cannabis is a separate fund that comes through, as you know, the monies that we use for there, that's a separate about, but it's two permits, it's through user fees and user funds, and that's how we operate. But the cannabis side is a separate fund, it's the 10-10-10 fund, which we budgeted about approximately about a million dollars this year, about equivalent to what the sheriff was talking about, to try to, for the next fiscal year.
You took over the controls of that department just recently.
Yes.
And at that time, I understand we had a pretty good backlog of regular building department code compliance issues.
Yes, sir.
And you've increased your staff due to the marijuana enforcement team.
Correct.
How are we doing on the other side of that fence?
That side, well, just like similar, if the priorities, we're looking at all the priorities, that side suffers because most of the cannabis side of it has inundated, our bled over into our regular code enforcement, so that we have two code enforcement officers, more than 50 percent, just going back dedicated to the cannabis side. There are about 30 percent, maybe 20 percent on one staff member working on regular code enforcement, AVA, as which abandoned vehicles, we've got about a few of that, so we're really just down to not even one FTE on the regular side of, so you can see that the timelines to go after those code enforcement abatements is going to take quite a bit of time. So we're suffering on that side especially.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Short, Supervisor Gueramendi?
Thank you very much, coming up. And just so you know, your work is being noticed when I go to RCRC meetings and I see what our code is doing, what their resources to knock out some of these legal grows, it's very much appreciated, especially some of the quick abatement hearings that are going on, shortening up the timeline, a lot of people are looking to see what we've learned as we've bumped into every piece of furniture walking into the room.
Right.
What the route actually is through the room. You have 44,000 plants that your team has cut down this year, I guess that's somewhere around $44 million worth of
That's correct.
Cannabis coming off the street, and illegal cannabis out of circulation, so thank you very much. You've got a great team that you've trained, that have been trained and have become experts in this. You have three members of that team, what happens under a ban to those members?
Well, if they're under the 10-10 fund, that funding will go away, most likely, but those positions will be
So these highly-trained, now efficient team will be dismantled?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, and thanks for your work.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Further questions of Mr. Short by the board?
I just have one more, I'm sorry.
All right, answer.
I ask a question of the sheriff as well, how long, under current funding, would it take you to get this under control? Never saying 100 percent, but feel like we've got a grip on illegal cannabis grows.
Just to be totally transparent, you know, I've been here about five months, and we're just starting to see performing in this program, and we're just getting started, and it's getting really fine. I think with the sheriff and this team, it's really, really good, and the hearing offices, it'll probably take another two to three years before we start getting handle on it, but every day we're getting more complaints and more illegal grows, and we're getting a handle, and we're getting a system in place that's just more refined and better. So it'll take about two or three years before we
Under a ban, I get a phone call, or I call into your office and say, illegal grow, there's a grow here, what happens?
Well, if we're down to the regional staff, we would, just be like seeing with the sheriff, we'd have to have part-time folks working on it, and we would have to prioritize what is more of a life safety issue versus something that isn't, and we would go out and do it. The timeline would take longer to go out and do it, but if, we would still go out and, you know,
Eventually.
Address it, eventually.
Eventually, thank you.
Thank you for responding, Mr. Short. Appreciate your cooperation.
Thank you.
Is there any other staff member that would like to present? Mr. Mauer, your presentation, is there any questions you may have of the board?
No, I have nothing else.
Counsel? Ladies and gentlemen, seeing we have a lot of people here, we're going to break for lunch a little early so everybody can run down and get a sandwich and get back. So let's see if we can get back here by 1:15. Would that work? Staff, any objections? We'll be back at 1:15. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome back after our lunch break. I just want to make sure that we've had all the input from staff. I know we announced this before the launch, is there any further input or any further presentation by staff to the board? Okay. Madam Clerk, are we up for our first, on this agenda item, this will be public comment?
So just to reiterate, we're on item four from the planning department, to conduct a public hearing to adopt an ordinance rescinding Chapter 17 dot 95 and replacing it with a new Chapter 17 dot 95 banning or regulating cannabis cultivation and related commercial activities, and to certify the environmental impact report. Just as a note, we can have five people in the aisle, the rest of you will have to go outside the door.
Or back to your seat.
Or back to your seat. Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, once again, and for the folks in our other adjoining room, if you wish to speak during the public comment, we're allowing five people to stand in line to speak. And if you wish from the other room to speak, you're going to have to come into these chambers and look through the window to make sure that we can allow five people and five people only standing up. I'm sorry for the inconvenience, but unfortunately, we need to provide excess in case there's emergency. Now, I understand we have one person here that's disabled, and I'm going to request, if I could, to have him speak in a group of five, so we can get him mobile up to the podium. Okay? Want to remind everybody, you have three minutes, and I will enforce the three-minute rule, as I always do. And I apologize to those folks that have a longer requirement, but you may want to speak to somebody, see if you can get your point across through that other person. Having said that, our first speaker, please. Mr. Frye.
George Frye, good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Board Supervisors. I worked as a land use planner in this county for 10 years, and I've reviewed many environmental impact reports. I'm satisfied with the environmental impact report for this project. I would like to preface my remarks with the urgency ordinance, let the cat out of the And I would like to say that I hope that this board has the infinite wisdom to pass an ordinance that is extremely rigid. And I would like to see in this ordinance, a very rigid environmental set of requirements. I have two questions that I heard in the planning director's comments. One of them, I didn't catch what they were going to do with lands that were unclassified as to any requirements for having grows. And the other one was, why a sunset clause after five years? Does that mean that everybody that has a registered grow after five years, they have to cease and desist? And that's about all I have to say about it. I just hope that you understand that the cat is out of the box, and that we need to deal with this project in a real, rational, logical way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. Ladies and gentlemen, in this situation where you have questions that you would like to address, I'm going to ask staff to make note of those questions, and they can respond at their choice after all the public speaking has taken place on the agendized item. Please keep in mind, it's not mandatory they respond, it is the choice of staff and the choice of the board. And we will answer those questions after the final public speaking person addresses the board for the agendized item. I hope that's clear. Okay? Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. Hello to the Chairman and the Board of Supervisors, as well as all the people that have joined us today for this discussion and our dialogue on this topic. My name is William J. Drury III, I'm 59 years old, and I've been disabled since I developed renal cell carcinoma in 1998, and my left kidney refrectomy, which went on for 14 hours. Basically, that's where they cut you open like a fish and take a lot out of you. Since then, I've developed many other things, including anxiety disorders, hypertension, coronary artery disease, severe depression, I can go on on loss stuff, diabetic neuropathy, and multiple infections and situations. I've had four heart attacks, I've been in four car wrecks where I was not at fault. The, I can go on, but nevertheless, I'd like to make, I think I made my point on my illnesses. Cannabis helps me deal with a number of my chronic problems such as pain. I recently started vaporizing cannabis in place of smoking, mainly for health reasons. As a result, I've experienced much better response due to my ills. I prescribe 10 Dilaudid a day, number eights, as well as MS KOD, two times a day. I have reduced my need for Dilaudid from 10 down to three by using medicinal cannabis. By vaporizing, the effect of the combination of the two is unreal, it just, it does a lot, even helps me with my neuropathy, which is really surprising. I also use cannabis in recreational setting, I find to be very therapeutic as well socially acceptable, which also makes me feel like I'm not a single person. Oops, sorry. I'm not single in this situation, I have other people that I can join with. I have grown cannabis for many years, I've never used chemicals that would harm my property, nor the water I drink from my own well. I have a well, I live in Copropos, and I have a well, and my septic tank is quite a ways from my well, but my use of chemicals is also not there. What we need is a fair opportunity to provide ourselves with both medicinal, as well as recreational cannabis. Lots that would forbid this would possibly make me a criminal. We can make sure things harmful to the, to our shared environment are not used, it could be part of the process for growing marijuana cannabis. We cannabis growers need to provide access to, as part of the agreement to grow cannabis already, so you can check to make sure if we're putting chemicals in the ground.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, your three minutes are up.
Can I just finish one thing?
No, sir, three minutes, please.
I just want to say, I live in a meager end, John.
Thank you very much, sir.
I can't afford to buy it.
I understand.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Here we stand again, two years has gone by, and a lot of things have been said, a lot of things have been tried to ban this marijuana in this county. The commercial cultivation is what we're talking about, not any personal use of marijuana. So we're not, we're talking about the commercial cultivation or commercial activities of marijuana, not anyone's personal use. So I'll just, a short statement. Calaveras County Cannabis Regulation Ordinance has been a failure. After two years, we have more illegal grow sites than when the ordinance was first put in place. The estimates range from 1,000 to 2,000 grow sites in our county. At the time of the ordinance was put in place, under state law, the only growers who were grandfathered in and could continue to operate were those that were part of a legally formed cooperative or collective prior to the end of 2015. No other growers were allowed to cultivate until the state got its licensing program in place. All of the growers in Calaveras County are operating illegally under state law, as they do not have a state-issued license, which is required to cultivate. And you can look that up in California Health and Safety Code, Section 11362 dot 777. It's obvious to most people that the growers do not intend to follow the rules and regulations set up either by the county or the state. They try to intimidate, bully, threaten, and litigate everyone that tries to stand in their way. There is ample evidence of that. It is time to stop this charade and put an end to commercial cannabis activities in our county. A ban can work and has worked in other counties. Growers will move on to other counties that don't have a ban in place. The state and county can eliminate growers over a period of time, as the growers will not be able to sell into the state cannabis program. I urge the Board of Supervisors, you, to vote yes on the ban ordinance on all commercial cannabis activities in our county, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents. Let's end this now. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Hello again, Bob Bowerman, District 5, Calaveras County, Normal. The urgency ordinance was not a test, it was temporary until we got regulations in place, not a ban, it was not meant for that. No matter how you look at it, if you put a ban in, it's called bait and switch. It's unethical, a lot of people believe it's illegal, I'm sure we'll find that out, and it's just plain wrong, okay? You're going to hurt a lot of people. You're going to hurt a lot of people over reaper madness and old thoughts. If you go to cannabisregulations.org, you'll find out what we're going to be doing. We're bringing regulations to the table. We're going to put it on the ballot. We're going to have the public decide, not you. Our answer to a ban done by the supervisors is real simple. The answer is no. We're not going to let it happen. We're going to take this issue to the public. We've come up with a regulation package that should please most everybody, not everybody. We're going to take care of residential areas. We're going to take care of the problems that everyone was talking about. We're going to bring common sense cannabis to the table for Calaveras County. It's going to be supported by the majority of the public. And we're going to make a law, and we're going to do that in June of two thousand eighteen. I appreciate everybody's efforts on both sides of the table, but it's time to look at this a little different. We now have thirty states with legal cannabis, medical, eight, you know, and then lots goes on and on. The fact is, is that cannabis is legal. Get over it, work with it, let's make it work for our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
My name is Ron Huckabee. I'm from Valley Springs, and I appreciate what the sheriff said, that no matter whether you ban or don't ban, there are going to be illegal grows in Calaveras County, whether you ban it or not. Statistics, Department of Public Safety for Colorado, I hope everybody has gone to at least a state who has some background in this type of law. These are some statistics. All of this is per one hundred thousand people. Almost forty percent increase in hospitalization since the implementation of their marijuana laws. Thirty percent cost up in emergency room visits. The increases occurred across all age groups, with the biggest jumps in the eight-year-old and younger age group. This is poisoning. This is from the rates of hospitalization. This is from the poisoning index, Rocky Mountain Poisoning System. Human marijuana exposure calls to Rocky Mountain Poison and Drug Center by age group twenty, two thousand six to two thousand and sixteen. Hundred percent increase between nine and seventeen-year-olds poisoning in their hospitals, seeing people. Three hundred percent increase from zero to eight years old. You're holding our youth's futures in your hands. I've heard a lot of talk about money, and I've heard a lot of talk about the enforcement area. I'm really glad that you brought up the fact there's going to be marijuana grows illegal and illegal in Calaveras County. The rates are phenomenal. If you go on SB two-three dash two-eight-three, Department of Public Safety in Colorado, there's a hundred and forty-seven page report. This is just from the public health part. The only place where marijuana offenses have increased is elementary and secondary schools, up thirty-four percent from two thousand twelve to two thousand fourteen. Our youth's futures in your hands. Reported marijuana use in the past thirty days by number of reported days, it's up twelve percent from one to seven days. It's up fourteen percent. Twenty-two days out of thirty days a month, somebody is using marijuana, and it's up fourteen percent since the institution of the law, the marijuana law in the state of Colorado. Driving under the influence in Denver by impairment reason, marijuana up one hundred percent in three years. Admissions in which marijuana was listed as a primary drug increased by forty-eight percent. You people are elected officials. You're here to do the job to protect this county. And to protect it, you need to enforce a ban.
Thank you.
Hello again. My name is William Hand. And a little bit about me, I started smoking when I was kind of young. And I'm a high school graduate, college graduate, restaurant manager for thirteen years, mortgage broker for eighteen years, military policeman for four years. So I think that what he said about poisoning youth has some merit, but there's also people that overcome that and are really productive in society. So take that with a grain of salt. I understand the youth, and I have seven grandchildren, five children, okay? So I understand that, okay? Funds for Measure C were used to help balance the budget. Imagine that, okay? But yet I still got this little thing in the mail. It's a ballot measure for firefighters. Why are we underpaying our firefighters and going to burden the existing tax basis when we could have taken marijuana money or cannabis money and helped fund the fire department and help fund the sheriff's department so they don't go to the different counties that have higher rates of pay? I understand what he's talking about, okay? And I want the protection. I am a legal grow that I have a cooperation or co-op that we have medical patients. So I'm one of those people in the state that is legal, and we are also legal within the county, okay? The bait and switch, I spent over four hundred thousand dollars, our family has spent over four hundred thousand dollars the last three years on developing our property and paying the county and the different services within the county, the sender's Ace Hardware, the different places in Arnold, the different places in Angels Camp. All our money is stayed in our county, okay? The special election, I don't understand. I'm going to vote for it, but why wasn't my money, my marijuana money, to help pay for those firefighters who were making what, four dollars and thirty-four cents an hour if they can drive a truck? Three dollars and seventy-three cents an hour if they hold a hose? That's ridiculous. Please understand that you have a new tax base that you're creating to not overburden the existing tax base. Not everybody in this county is rich and land farmers. This is a below median income county, okay? There are still some poor families in here. The funds will come every single year, okay? We need a compromise and propose an ordinance. The proposed ordinance is no compromise. There's only nine industrial areas on the land map and no ag land on the land map that you've created out there. I can't see any to where I can go buy property. Please go to a rural residential at five acres more with your own setbacks to make it residentially fine, okay? Don't be the county supervisors that lead us down the road of bankruptcy, please.
Hi, guys. I hope you had a good lunch. I'm Alisa from Ranch Calaveras. I'm an employee of Frog Farms, and I'm one of those poor residents that he was talking about where there was days where I had to decide, what do I feed my grandchildren? Because I'm raising my grandchildren. What do I feed them? Do I give them macaroni and cheese today and just that? Or do I get this chicken and just go ahead and just let them have that chicken and me not eat for the day? Last six months, I've been working on this farm. You know what I can do? I can go to the store today and go buy a roast for my family. You know how big that was to have them and to be able to cook a roast for them? When the kids need shoes, I can go and buy them shoes now. I don't have to rely on the county to, to help me support those grandchildren. I'm supporting them, and I'm doing it, I'm doing it by getting a job here. If I got a job in Stockton, or if I got a job out in Galt or whatever at a minimum wage, number one, I'd have to get a babysitter for my grandchildren because I wouldn't be home on time in order to take care of them when they got out of school. So what's going to happen? The county's going to have to hire somebody to take care of those grandchildren in order for me to get home to raise them. I live local. I work local. I work four miles from home, three miles from where the kids are. It's important for me to have my job, you know? And if you guys take this away, you're not just affecting the cultivators, you're affecting families. I'm not the only family on this farm. There's five families that live, it will affect. Five families that will have to go on the system. Because we can't, we can't afford to feed our kids. We can't afford to pay our house payment. CC is WD, shit, there goes our water, or here goes that ten-day notice and goes our bill because we can't pay it on time because we didn't have the money. But now we have the money and we can pay our bills on time. We don't have to rely on food stamps. We can pay and we can feed our kids. You know, if you ever lived in my shoes or walked in my shoes and knew how it was to think about, think about how to feed your family. You have not a, I'm going to, you have to think about how you're going to do it. In the last six months, and I have to worry about thinking about, just to be able to make a list, this fucking, oops, is awesome. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
I'm Chris Craker, AIA. I'm an architect. I've been an architect for thirty-five years. We've been designing grow houses for the last five years, all around Northern California. Our job is to make them safe, secure, and to meet all health regulations. That's essential for, for any of these, any of the facilities. And I think that's what you need to think about when you are considering serious regulations for this industry. Because if you don't, you're going to get a lot of bad work out there that's going to be undersupervised and unsafe. Our intent is to make them regulate, to make them safe, make them state compliant with state laws, to make them work with California laws and the very strict Title XXIV requirements. We make our buildings, we make our, we design our buildings and make sure that they are proved to be totally compliant with ADA accessibility, ADA accessibility. William back there, who's just went outside, he can't even go get into your bathrooms. They are totally illegal. But ours are all accessible for people to live in, to work in, and to get into. And I think those are the things that you really should consider. They're climate controlled, they have security, and they have safe regulations for you to be able to, be able to collect taxes and make them safe places to be. So I hope that you will support good regulations that will make them available, make them safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Board, Sheriff, Council. Today, you faced an important decision that will have a lasting effect on Calaveras County. I urge you to consider the full impact of a ban on commercial cannabis and its devastating social and economic impact. Some of you ran on the ban platform. Your constituents wanted this due to the influx of illegal grows that our county faced in recent years. Due to regulation and taxation, these illegal grows are being dealt with. We heard today that the sheriff has taken out fifty-three locations and over a hundred thousand plants. It's fantastic. I commend the Calaveras Sheriff's Office for their hard work, but with a ban, the very people who give farmers a bad name are the only ones that are going to be able to stay. It's important to make a distinction between illegal growers and small registered farmers. Registered farmers care about the environment, about the groundwater, about having good relationships with their neighbors, about donating to the community, about being a part of the community. With a ban, you force those farmers to go somewhere else. They're not going to be here. And who's going to fill that gap? People that don't care about following the laws. The second major effect is its devastating effect on our economy. Without cannabis and its revenue and its stimulus, we're in a grave situation. I think we've heard about it today with the auditor. It's not looking good. The Calaveras County has a massive unfunded pension liability. To throw away a tax revenue of sixteen million dollars per year? When we have an unfunded pension that's going to be seven million next year and it's going to raise over time? How can you do that? Change can be scary. I understand that. But we have to face the facts. Cannabis is modern agriculture. Calaveras has the perfect climate to farm. Let's not throw this opportunity away. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deborah Walsh, and I have a commercial farm, total compliance with the county. And I am going to keep this short because he said a lot of what I was going to say. And I just urge you guys to really consider just the regulations. It's so important. And for myself, at one point, I lost everything I had when the economy took a dump. And cannabis was my second chance to get myself back up on my feet, work. We have a beautiful farm. We're, it's, we're doing really, really well. And the money we paid in taxes this year was substantial. So consider regulation. I would appreciate it. And thank you for making things so clearly, Sheriff.
James Walker, Murphy's. I'm not a grower, I'm chef. I grew up in this county. I've been before you guys a couple of times. I want to start by saying the first time I ever saw a large amount of marijuana, which to me was a large amount of marijuana, I was twelve or thirteen. We were shooting skeet out of Camp Nine Road, Buddy and his dad. And when we got done, we still wanted to do shooting. We were out of skeet. We went to look for the ones we missed. I noticed these bags up on a treetop down in this ravine. His dad said, hey, James, climb up there and see what's up there. And I started throwing these things down. There was about five of them. Every single one of them was filled with one bag, one-pound bags of marijuana. My friend's dad put it in the car. He was scared driving it back to his house, even though it was a couple of miles, and we called the sheriff. This is nineteen eighty-three. This is not stuff that's come along with a UO ordinance or anything else. It's always been here. I heard reality thrown around a lot today, and I like that. I love what the sheriff's been doing. You've got to realize, you cut all of his money, he's going to keep trying to do it. But you get rid of the car and you give him a tricycle, you only give him a one bullet for his gun, and you give him two employees, what's he going to be able to eradicate? Also, it sounds like we need all of our parts of our machine working to just run our infrastructure in our county. These, all these positions that aren't filled, if we just trash them, it's like trashing moving parts to the machine. The machine's going to fall apart. Positions need to be filled. Our sheriff staff needs to be filled. Murphy's, you know, it's growing. Everything that we do in that town exponentially grows every year. We need enforcement for the alcohol. I'm tired of hopping off the side of the highway, walking home because I'm going to get hit by a drunk driver after ten o'clock. I like that we see people, you know, trying to keep things in order at Murphy's, but sometimes it comes down to a couple elderly constables that we've got running the show. And after nine PM, when everyone's been drinking all day, that's when the problems start. And we need enforcement. Our sheriff needs officers. If we cannot get them any other way of it to regulate, that's the direction we need to go. We cannot cut our jobs. We can't lose more people. It's falling apart. I mean sidewalks, law enforcement, education, all these things can be earmarked. So, no, I've got seventeen seconds. It's rude.
Excuse me, sir.
So I have to say, but.
Excuse me, sir. I'm going to give you your time back. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a timer right here. It's being controlled electronically and visually. I don't need to be reminded if it's time. I've got that part handled. Thank you. Give him back his time, please.
Seventeen seconds, this one, right? As I've said, I grew up here, guys. I keep hearing these things thrown out that these are problems being created by an ordinance. You guys created that ordinance, the guys came out of the woods. They came out of the woodwork. They're going to go right back into the woods again. We're going to lose the good ones, and we're going to have our forests filled with people.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Mr. Tofanelli, I'm one of your constituents. We spoke last week. My name's Anna Stepp. I'm the owner of Frog Farm, but I'm a lot more than a grower. I'm a retired Air Force vet, okay? Owner, integrity, and service before self. I served thirty years, okay? Thirty. Not all of them consecutively. Not all of them consecutively. Sometimes I had a break in service because I went from being enlisted to an officer. I needed time to go to school, so I had a break in service. The creed of the Air Force is, "I'm an American airman. My mission is to fly, fight, and win. I'm faithful to a proud heritage, a tradition of honor and a legacy of valor. I'm an American airman, guardian of freedom and justice. My nation's sword and shield, its century and avenger." Now, I'm bringing this up because I work with a lot of vets. I've been a nurse for 30 years as well. I've deployed our soldiers, our airmen, our fighters, and I've made sure that everything was dotted and crossed on every piece of paper that went across my desk. As the chief nurse of a rescue wing here in California, I wrote regulations. When you write regulations, at least as far as when it affects people's health, you have to pull in subject matter experts. Subject matter experts such as our sheriff, such as Barbara Kalin, who I heard speak earlier, even this company that did this EIR. I read that. I don't exactly agree with it because on my farm, I have no rodenticides. I have no insecticides. I have nothing that will kill anything, other than, you know, I don't have anything that kills anything, actually, now that I think about it. The planning department made two recommendations, one for a ban and the other for regulation. I expect, as a citizen of Calaveras County, to see both addressed equally, okay? I understand that there's a lot of passion on both sides. For people that want the ban, they see one side, we see another. There's compromise there. I believe that if we all sat down and used common sense, the issue of money wouldn't be an issue because we're gonna, we're gonna figure something out. The issue of not having grows in our backyard, you know, we can work on things like that. Banning isn't gonna change anything right now. What's gonna happen with the ban is, it delays what is gonna be inevitable, and that we've seen across the country in every, in every state that has passed regulation. You know, we're seeing a lot of progress there. I would like to see this county continue that progress, okay? One thing I wanna, I, I had a lot more to say, but in closing, I just wanna say, closed lines are like faulty parachutes. They refuse to open.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name's Adrian Lambie. I'm an attorney with the law firm Archer Norris, and I work in my firm's regulatory compliance and litigation practice groups. We advise and represent regulated industries throughout this state, including many businesses here in Calaveras County. As such, we've made a careful study of the ordinances currently pending before this board. Our findings are set forth in written comments previously submitted for your consideration. The short version is that a ban ordinance would be a fiscal, economic, and demographic catastrophe for this county, not to mention the extensive legal repercussions which inevitably would follow. Most importantly, it's a catastrophe that need not and should not occur. Throughout the state and across this region, jurisdictions are coming to the realization that effective, common-sense cannabis regulation is not only an economic boon for their citizens, it is the most effective tool in regulating and eradicating black market cultivation operations. And we've seen that here in this county and heard it from our sheriff today. So, across the region, we see cities and counties either currently regulating or instructing their staffs to prepare common-sense cannabis regulations. San Joaquin County, the city of Sacramento, Nevada County, the city of Stockton, Stanislas County, Yolo County, the city of Patterson, the city of Calusa, Plumas County, the city of Walnut Creek. The jurisdictions are far too numerous to list in this three-minute comment period. Suffice to say that a vote in favor of a ban today is a vote on the wrong side of history. This is your legacy at stake. Today is about how this board will be remembered, five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now. I grew up right up the hill in West Point. I graduated from Calaveras High School right down the street. When I moved back to this county to raise my children here, I hope that I can tell them, I was there the day that Supervisor Clapp looked beyond campaign promises and voted for the greater good. I was there the day Supervisor Mills made the most difficult decision of his lengthy career in public service, and he chose a promising future rather than a return to the past. I was there the day Gary Tofanelli cast the vote that saved the economy of this county. I hope today is that day, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Supervisors, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jason Hauer. I'm a local business owner and District 3 voter. My companies employ dozens of local families and will be severely impacted by the removal of our largest industry. When I voiced my support for the cannabis industry, often I met with, oh, the only reason he wants it is because he stands to make money. As if I should be ashamed of being an entrepreneur, as if I should be ashamed of wanting to build successful business here in Calaveras and provide jobs. Of course, this is just one of many absurd arguments I've heard, people claiming that cannabis is not agriculture, that it's driving property values down and tourism numbers down despite clear evidence to the contrary. I've seen Tea Party Republicans hanging signs calling for stricter environmental regulations as if they're card-carrying members of the Sierra Club. Their arguments are disingenuous, and we see through them. I've heard about the guns and the pit bulls, the threats and intimidations, et cetera. These things have nothing to do with regulated farms. We are corporations. We have accountants and lawyers. We have W-2 employees. We protect our inventory with insurance and security, just like any other business. We want the illegal growers out of here just as, as bad as everyone else. Fact-denying will get us nowhere, gentlemen. It's time for our leaders to lead. Work out a compromise that protects our neighborhoods and doesn't completely devastate hundreds of local businesses and thousands of employees. Today, I'm sure you're gonna hear about the children and our road safety, et cetera. Marijuana is a gateway drug. Whether you believe these claims or not, it is irrelevant. We are working on a land use ordinance. Marijuana is now legal in California. We're gonna be able to drive to Stockton, purchase marijuana, bring it back to Calaveras, and consume it. It will have no impact on all of these things. In closing, I just wanna remind you that we are an industry. We provide jobs. A job is the foundation of our society. Removing of the foundation of anything and the results will be obvious. A ban is a job killer, a foundation killer. I haven't heard an objection that cannot be addressed via regulations. Don't want it in the neighborhoods? Get it out of the neighborhoods. Prohibition is not the answer. Our issues are easily fixed. When you go to the dentist because of a toothache, the dentist doesn't chop your head off to fix the issue. Deal with the toothache, leaders, so we can all go back to being a unified and prosperous Calaveras.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having me. My name is Rick Frimmer. I have property in Mountain Ranch District 2. I am, I have a background in economics. I have a degree from the Wharton School of the University of Pennsylvania. I'm also an attorney, and I specialize in municipal bankruptcy. I barely have three minutes to get this out, so I'm gonna do it in bullet points. I have a longer presentation, which I'll hand up, which you can read at your leisure. I hope you do. You know, for the last 16 months, you've been debating about the environment. And yes, it was legally required to do that under SEQA. But it's only one of the number of issues that you have to deal with here. And the larger one, the gorilla in the room that nobody seems to be talking about, except perhaps two of the last speakers, is the economy. So, what I'm, my presentation, that you can read later, all of these, everything that I'm about to say is taken from public facts. So let's just look at the underlying facts, folks. Calaveras County is a factory town. You don't think of it that way, but it is. This is a $650 million economy, and cannabis is 350 million of it. That's over 50%. It's no different than Detroit, and it's no different than Las Vegas. What happens when you close the factory? I'm sure you've all heard, of all the factories that close in the Midwest, you know what happens to the towns? They go bust. And in three to five years, this county could be bankrupt. I'm in every municipal bankruptcy in the country. I've been in Detroit, I'm in Puerto Rico, Stockton, San Bernardino. I know it when I see it. Now, I'm not saying it's definite that it's gonna happen, but let's face it. The urgency ordinance has already put a stake in the economy here. And any further ban, or even the alternative regulation that the planning department came up with, is likely to put the final nail in the coffin. How do you replace a $350 million industry? It's never been done before. I wanna take a look at Detroit for one second. Detroit, in 1959, had the highest per capita income of any city in the world. In 2014, I spent 18 months in the bankruptcy court. It'll never recover. They didn't protect your industry, they didn't diversify. Some people think you can run an economy on retirees. That's why Puerto Rico's in bankruptcy. All of the young people have left to get jobs on the mainland, leaving the elderly behind. Unfortunately, they just don't provide any economic benefit. They don't use much services, but they don't run businesses and hire people. So look, I could take any industry, auto repair, for example. Why don't we ban auto repair and gas stations? I don't even have to write that in environmental report. I can tell you right now that the environment will be safer. It's not really the answer. My, my takeaway is this. I implore you, before you go any further with this, commission a county-sponsored economic impact report. You need to know what's going to happen in the next three to five years. And this goes beyond Rebecca Callan and the current budget. Do it. 45,000 people are counting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Powell. I'm here on behalf of my client, Rolling Hills Bookkeeping LLC. I'm an attorney at Mitchell Shadowick, specializing in SEQA and environmental primarily. I've worked in 30-plus counties from Imperial all the way up to Siskiyou and everywhere in between on SEQA and NEPA and other environmental projects. So we've submitted several letters to the county pointing out what we believe are serious flaws with the draft EIR and the final EIR. My technical comments are on record, and my speaking time's limited, of course, so I'll just give you a quick overview of our issues with this EIR. Primarily, the county asked Ascent to draft an EIR analyzing the impacts of regulation, not a ban. The ban was included as an alternative, but the analysis was so short and superficial, it was basically a throwaway alternative. And I look at EIRs all the time, often for a single project, not a countywide ban like this, but a single project, they'll take up half a bookshelf. In this case, when I got it, I was, I was looking at it, and I thought, that's it? Oh, okay, let's look at that. And I read the alternative section, and it was just a couple pages, and it was clear to me, well, they were not given the directive that this might be an actual alternative. So I bet Ascent was shocked when they found out that the, the board was seriously considering that alternative. Now the county has asked Ascent to draft the final EIR to do something it was never meant to do, analyze the impacts of a ban thoroughly. If that was the original purpose of this EIR, it would've had a very different methodology. It would've looked at baseline data for illegal grows, habitat resources for those grows. It would've looked at pesticide use. How effective would enforcement be? And where would the funding come for, for enforcement? We don't actually know the impacts of the ban because this reconfigured final EIR did not collect the necessary baseline data to do so. When we commented previously that the EIR doesn't analyze potential for greater numbers of illegal grows under a ban, along with the greater environmental damage such as pesticide use, illegal water diversion and habitat destruction, fire risk, for example, Ascent replied that non-compliance was speculative, and that they can just assume that full compliance will occur. Seriously? That's, that's speculative? It is not speculative to assume that the illegal grows that have gone on for years in this county will continue and expand under a ban, causing far, far more environmental harm than closely regulated grows that are inspected and permitted by local and state agencies. What is speculative is, you know, more like a fantasy, that the EIR's assumption that the county will cut off its source of funding for enforcement and suddenly all the illegal grows will vanish. That's more than speculative. That is undeniably false. You know, Ascent responded earlier that quantifying the illegal grows under a ban and doing more of a comprehensive baseline analysis was complicated. Difficult. Yes, it is, but that's their job, and it's easy to assume facts that we know are false.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
George?
My name is Susan Galvin. I'm currently president of the Mountain Ranch Community Club. In the year following the fire, I was on the Board of Calaveras Recovers and worked every day in the trailer at the park with fire victims from that fire. So I've gotten to know hundreds of our residents over the last two years and have been very deeply involved in the well-being of the community. Excuse me. I, I came forward to speak today because our community is extremely fragile, the whole District 2 area, the fire area. We have been through one tremendous disaster, and we are now on the brink of another, in our view, if the ban gets passed. We already have issues with the side effects of the illegal grows who've come in. They, just as one example, I live in Sheep Ranch, and this spring I watched as truckload after truckload after truckload of dirt and piping was, came right down Sheep Ranch Road and went right out Armstrong Road to set up illegal grows. And that is just mushrooming every year. I can't see how a ban is gonna stop the people who don't care now about the law. And if there's no enforcement, then those of us who live there are in really dire straits. Those of us who are heading up the nonprofits and other community activities are working hard together to try to recreate a community where people actually want to live. We're doing the best we can, but with a ban, I, I'm, I'm pretty certain our, our efforts will be in vain. Many people who live there right now are on the brink of leaving. They're waiting to hear the outcome of what happens with this Board of Supervisors. And if they see that they are at risk, that their community is at risk, that their well-being is at risk, they're gonna be gone, along with the legitimate growers who have done their best to be good community members and to help us with the recovery. It's the illegal growers that are the issue. They are not going to provide anything positive for this county or for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Sue Holbert, Mountain Ranch. I wanna read into the record a letter that my friend Sheila Gradison in Vallesito wrote yesterday to Dennis Mills. Hello, Dennis. I'm aware that the ban on cannabis is coming up for consideration tomorrow by the Board of Supervisors. I urge you to reconsider your position on that ban. As long-term resident and business owner in this county since 1977, I wanna do what I can, can to let you and the other supervisors know how I feel about the wisdom of appropriate regulation of cannabis farming in our county. That is, neither a ban nor such restrictive regulation that only the few can afford to continue growing. I fear that our poor county is on the verge of bankruptcy, will be bankrupt even quicker. All of the Measure C tax money will go away. As you probably recognize, those funds were applied to balancing the county budget this year. There is no plan at present providing a means of dealing effectively with the dangers of illegal growing. By the end of next year, we may be facing the same challenges as other counties in states such as Siskiyou County. Many legitimate farmers who've done their best to comply with the Measure C will be unable to stay in business. For all too many of them, this was their only means of recovering from the Butte fires' impact on their homes, land, and personal lives. As a healthcare practitioner, I have a particular interest in making sure that medical marijuana and the businesses that dispense those products remain for the continuing benefit of our community. I have many clients who rely on those medicines derived from particular strains of cannabis for pain management. It's a form of healthcare that is supremely important to the quality of their lives. Please take these concerns seriously, represent those constituents like myself and many others who are wanting the best for our county's citizens, their safety, and Calaveras County's financial security going forward. Thank you, Sheila Gradison.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Bill Wilson, District One, De Donner Petroveterin. Husband to a legal marijuana farmer. I'm a dead man walking. I died 20 years ago from a heart attack. I was saved, brought back. I'm now a bionic man. I got a pacemaker in here. That's the only reason I'm in here today, folks. That's why my name's not on this farm. If my wife, if I was to die and my own name was on that farm, my wife would have to go through all kinds of hoops. Not only the hoops she's already jumped through to be a legal cannabis farmer in this county. We came up here seven years ago, after her father died of pancreatic and esophageal cancer. You've all heard that before. I gave you all a piece of paper earlier, and those are the little data I crunched over the weekend. Those are the denial letters. 196 people were denied for 408 reasons. Out of those 408 reasons, 22 were, they couldn't get a fence up and a dang sign. 22 people. Forty-five people couldn't get their paperwork in by September 7th. Dialed those papers that were due. The planning commission never called them back. They weren't responsible. They weren't supposed to call them back. Obviously, when they went through, they put those papers over here, they put papers that had papers over here. So, they never called them back. Now, we also have another 45 people that didn't get a VOE permit, didn't get a sales license or a business license, and they didn't do their NOI paperwork. That's 90 people out of 196. That's pretty good. Then we get to the real criminals, the real desperados, those people that did grading without permits after May 10th. Those people that actually put false statements on there. We have a few people in there, I, sorry, I gave all those papers away, should have kept one. We have a few people that didn't pass their background check. We have a few people that lied. But we have a lot of people that did go through the whole process, got their papers in, invested in their farms, put money in their property. Now, we come up with ban light. All those properties are either on RA, RR, or U. 186 people, or closer to 500 people, are going to have to move those farms if they stay regulated. They've got to shut down immediately, then they've got two years to sell their property. Go out and buy one of the five available qualifying properties for sale on the MLS in this county. Talk about a land swap, talk about real estate agents making money, there's 500 properties go online. They've all got to sell. I can't afford to keep my property if I've got to move my operation, or my wife's operation. Sorry, I get confused sometimes.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Good afternoon. My name is Raymond Smith, the lobbying director with Calaveras Normal. I live in Valley Springs. I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your commitment to this county and your service to others. The presentation by the staff earlier today was very informative. I'd like to thank you as well. I'd like to speak again to the foundation of Republican government, which is popular sovereignty, and what I believe is part of the American dream is voting, and having your vote count, and having your vote heard. If we are going to look at regulations, we really need to look at the deception that was used in the last year, going back to the parking lots and the street corners when they were gathering the signatures. Whether or not we're going to vote on that deception, or whether or not we're going to allow the people to have a period of time to look at the regulations which they're going to live with, and come to a conclusion from their standpoint, and not from the standpoint of their elected officials. However, that is the democratic process, so I support that as well. But what we need to think about is if this is in fact just a commercial ordinance, or if this is in fact an ordinance that is affecting both adults for recreational, but also for personal medical use. The state law 11362.777 was repealed, that was replaced. We do have some, somewhat deception that's been paramount to the support for the ban, and it's mainly around the support for the commercial regulation part of it, and the fact that they don't want any commercial regulation. I'm really supportive of a regulation, a comprehensive regulation, and a regulation that doesn't cut out 80% of the farmers, or create a situation where we may not have the funds available for even a regulation. That would effectively be just as bad as a ban. And part of Calaveras Normal work within the last several months is developing this platform. CannabisRegulations.org is where you can go to that and figure out what we're going to be doing with our regulations. It is in no way disrespectful to what the county is doing. It's separate to that, so that the people can actually have something to come to a conclusion on. Because again, as an American citizen, I believe that our right to vote is one of the most important things, and it's really, I have a high reverence for it, but I also have a respect for each and every one of you. And again, thank you for your service and commitment to others. Thank you today.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Jed Richardson, Realtor for Mountain Ranch. I'm here to discuss the effects of a ban on property values and property taxes. Last year, according to the budget presentation given in September, property values and taxes were up 8.6%, adding an additional 1.05 million to the general fund. An increase in value and revenue has occurred for the last three years, demonstrating that cannabis cultivation has not had a negative effect on the values, but has contributed positively. However, this isn't necessarily true for District Two, which has a 20% decrease in property values and taxes due to the effects of the Butte Fire, causing a shortage in revenue for critical District Two services, such as fire protection, necessitating a special election for ballot Measure E next month. A cannabis ban would further exacerbate the situation by further reducing property values in District Two and countywide. If a ban were enacted, properties used for commercial cannabis production will flood the market, driving down values. This will be on top of the properties burned by the Butte Fire, soon to be placed on the market, as owners receive settlements from PG&E. This could all but wipe out the recent countywide increases in assessed value and revenue. On the other hand, regulation of cannabis cultivation will have a positive impact on property values, as taxable improvements are made to cultivation properties, such as constructions of homes and infrastructure in the form of wells, septic systems, irrigation systems, agricultural buildings for drying and storage. These improvements are especially critical in District Two, where burned properties will likely remain undeveloped for many years to come otherwise. While many cultivators in the burn area have started or completed construction of their homes, others are awaiting for the assurance of intelligent regulation. I urge the Board of Supervisors to provide this intelligent regulation for the betterment of the county and its citizens through increased revenue and services, including the critical services of fire protection and law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Brock, this is Valley Springs. You've come to know me as you've come to know almost everyone in this room. We show up every couple of weeks. The people you don't see are the 95% of the people who are also your constituents, who are also relying on your vote. They don't have a dog in the hunt, they don't have an axe to grind, they basically are just leaving it to you. And I submit that if this ends in a 3 to 2 vote, you will have all failed at your job. You've had a long time to find a way to come to a 5-0 vote, and if you haven't been able to do it yet, you ought to take more time and do it, and I hope one of you will have the courage to abstain and allow that process to go forward, because a 3 to 2 vote is not a good vote. Now, I live on Laurent Lane, which runs from Silver Rapids to Huckleberry. Harper Street comes off and halfway down. There are 19 houses on those two streets. Is there anyone here from one of those 19 houses? No, only me. There are about 30 voters in those houses. So, you've heard from me, less than 5% of the people who will be affected by this. And I did have a chance this morning to get a few minutes of FaceTime with Lori A. Jacks, who's the czar, the cannabis czar. And she steered me to one of the BCC lawyers, whose name is Sarah Gardner. And I outlined a third way, replicating what's been done in Montgomery County, Maryland. And Lori A. Jacks was favorable to it, but of course, she wants us in. They want us not to ban. But she said it would be a very difficult road, because the statute, as constructed, did not anticipate that county might be an entity that applied for a license, as is done with alcohol in Montgomery County. You can only buy liquor in a county store in Montgomery, even though the state of Maryland does not do that. So, the county of Montgomery had to get that bill carried. We would have to get a bill carried that amended the licensing restrictions, changed from an individual to also include an entity. But I believe that if we were able to create a county medical authority and to employ these small growers that we really should care about, at decent wages, as Montgomery County does, they have 300 employees, they put 30 million in the general fund each year, they have 21 county liquor stores. I believe that we could do something like that. It's thinking outside the box, but we have a very divided 3 to 2 vote, and frankly, I don't think there's a mandate that some of the ban people think there is. For instance, I supported Clyde Clapp. I gathered signatures for the recall, but the fact is, more people voted not to recall Steve Kearney than voted for Clyde Clapp. Now, it's true that all the ban people voted for him, but that's not a mandate.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Allison Charles Smith. I live in Sheep Ranch, and I'm also the president, the board president, for the Mountain Ranch Resource Center and Youth Alliance. And I come to you as that, not only as resident of D2, but also as kind of employing for your help. Myself, such as Susan Galvin of the Community Club, are faced with daily, of dealing with the people in our community who have been affected by Butte. And so, we feel that with AT&amp;T, PG&E, and some, and what the county has sort of left us abandoned. We're also the county that has more than 70% of all, say, registered or legal grows, but also there is a very large percentage in our district that are illegal grows. And as Susan mentioned about Hubbard, you know, as Armstrong Road, I lived on Armstrong Road. And my property last year, when we first enacted the original ordinance, was that I had three registered grows next to me. They were all, this year, we have 11 that are unregistered, large grows, clear cutting, taking from the O'Neill Creek. So, I'm asking you, as a resident of District Two, I'm asking you for the citizens of the District Two that need your help, to take the courage to vote, and vote for regulation, because not, a ban is not the way to go. We are in dire need, and we need your help. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi. I'm Mark Moore with District Four. I'm a retired fire captain, and I only identify that just to show you that it takes all kinds. I am not a grower, nor do I intend to ever be one, but this issue affects us all in one way or another. And though I believe in majority rule, it is nevertheless extremely important and necessary that those common wishes be developed, nurtured, and supported by facts and reasonable deduction, and not by misinformation, misconceptions, and unreasonable and unrealistic opinions. Cannabis is legal in this state, and that's the way it is. Medical cannabis in particular has been clinically proven and accepted to be a valid and valuable remedy for a long list of illnesses. It has been with us since the beginning of recorded time, and is not a fad, and it will not go away. Therefore, the best approach to the subject, I believe, is to learn the truth about it before formulating one's opinion. And here's a fact: the county is once again in dire financial straits. Last I checked, the latest annual budget accepted by this board would have been much worse if not for an 11th-hour bailout on several levels, including a free-up of millions of taxpayer dollars that were collected from legal pot growers. If the board approves a ban on legal cannabis cultivation, and in doing so eliminates the lucrative tax base brought in by the legal growers, what is our deficit going to look like next year and the years beyond that? It's not going to be good. Regulation obviously is the answer, and it should be extremely comprehensive regulation, in my view. Where, how, and even why a particular grower conducts his or her business should be ascertained and controlled to the satisfaction of reasonable statute. It should not be overlooked that other counties near us, surrounding us, have embraced the opportunity and are using the cannabis cultivation revenue windfall to their ultimate benefit to improve basic services and to eliminate deficit. They are figuring out how to make it work for their communities. But this board, to me, does not appear to want to do the sometimes hard work that it takes to get through the muck and reach the pot of gold. It should also be of interest that Angels Camp, the one and only incorporated town in our county, who had previously banned cannabis cultivation within their city limits, has now quickly changed their tune and is in the process of reversing that decision. One final note: if a ban, excuse me, if you proceed with a ban, I will not be surprised if other towns in our county file for incorporation, to gain as much sovereignty as possible away from the rule of the Board of Supervisors and carve out their own future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Honorable Chairman Joan Wilson, District One. This is more than a cannabis issue. The land use issue, the rights of landowners telling, some people telling other people how they can use their land or not use their land, it's a healthcare issue, it's an environmental issue, it's a small business issue. This is about people that want to be a part of the pursuit of happiness, leading their own lives and being responsible community members. Some are rich, some are poor. This is about a proud county and proud people. You had time to ban. You could have done that the minute you got into office, but you didn't. Instead, you took an EIR that was meant for regulation and redirected it for a ban. You could have been working on the ordinance that was already in place to make it better, rather than going out and reinventing the wheel. This is about community. It's about families. The results of banning an industry that has already been allowed to operate would be devastating. Tearing families and community apart. Children have formed friendships in schools, having to move and leave their friends, leaving their cousins, their aunts, uncles, losing their grandparents, teachers, and clubs. Grandparents losing their grandchildren. Generations torn apart. Communities ripped to pieces. Dreams shattered, money lost, ending in poverty, despair. These are the scenes that would be painted by our Board of Supervisors here today if you ban an agricultural industry that has jumped through all kinds of hoops and endured financial hardships to be here. Asking people that are disabled to move in order to grow outside. If you ban, then let's go all the way. To protect our children, to protect our families, to many kids, there are many kids that are drinking underage, so if you have fear about cannabis and youth and are going to ban it because you are against it being used recreationally, then finish the job and ban it all. Alcohol and all of that is only used recreationally. It is destructive to our society. And in conclusion, if you're going to ban cannabis, at least, ban it all. Let's be healthy and clean. I am an organic farmer. When I started this, I said this is scary, and this is very scary to those children and those families. How are they going to support their families? How are they going to move farms? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Next speaker. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Carol Couchman. I'm in District Two. We are a registered commercial garden. We've gone through all the steps required to become a compliant registered site. We have done everything we need to do to make sure that our garden is safe and secure. We believe in medical cannabis. We have personal experience with what this plant can do, and I sent you an email earlier this week with more of the details of our situation. I agree that cannabis cultivation needs to be monitored and controlled. It has been in the county for a very long time, and there are people that have grown cannabis for many years. For those of us who did everything required and invested a lot of money to comply with all the requirements, it doesn't make sense to me that you'd be willing to send this county into a terrible financial situation. The lawsuits that could happen will bankrupt this county. Do you really think that is something that is good for this community? Wouldn't it be more sensible to sit down with the farmers and the community and work together to address the concerns, to make sure that safety and security are priority, and work to make sure that you have the funds to control it and know what is happening in the county? There is a way. Cooperation is the key. Your own financial person stated on a television broadcast that it was going to be a financial disaster if a ban was enacted, that there were going to be all kinds of unanticipated financial issues, including PERS and personnel funding issues. Please listen to and consider what your staff is saying. The litigation that will ensue is going to be a disaster for everyone and not a legacy that you will be able to be proud of. My partners and I have worked very hard to build a business that we can be proud of, and I have met a lot of registered farmers in this county who are amazing people. The revenue that will be collected will keep this county financially solvent, and attempted a ban is going to destroy it. Is that what you want? Do you not have the power and wisdom of discernment in your soul? I pray that you have the wisdom and insight to make the right decision, that you can understand that you don't have to personally agree with the cannabis issue in order to agree to acknowledge the history of cannabis in this county and the need to regulate and control it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. Sandy Maitra at Mountain Ranch, D2, full-time resident. I'm here today to restate some of the portions of my public comment from last week to ensure my entire message is more broadly heard. As the lone non-cultivator, non-county employee involved in crafting the Urgency Ordinance, or UO, I'd like to see the work begun there, put towards the development of a permanent form of regulation. Where the county has significantly failed its constituents is in not continuing the regulation dialogue using valuable information gleaned from the current program. One glaring gap involves the analysis to ensure costs of the UO are recovered and set appropriately going forward as required under seventeen dot ninety-five dot two fifty dot D. This was to be completed within a year, yet it apparently sits on the CIO's desk as an administrative draft. Draft, by definition, means a preliminary version of a piece of writing. While this means the county has failed to meet the one-year deadline stipulated in the UO, there is useful data that could be mined from there. No one disputes there are opportunities brought to light via the Urgency Ordinance for improved regulation. Few can ignore the monetary contributions made by the county budget this year by registered cultivators, and several folks have spoke to those today. Likewise, we must also consider factors recently brought to light by Gary Stevens via the Pine Trade. Most importantly, no one can ignore the financial devastation looming before this county should this revenue stream become nonexistent. My property tax bills for four parcels of land in Mountain Ranch represent seven thousand dollars in tax revenue. Should you, as a collective board, proceed with a ban over more restrictive yet permissive regulation, I will take that to mean you find little value in a consistent revenue stream or an enforceable ordinance. As a result, I'm changing my habits relative to paying those in a manner that I hope others might perhaps embrace. I'll no longer pay my property taxes in full prior to the due date. I will pay them twice a year in person. I will also do it before there is a late fee levied. In closing, let me remind you of the Sons of Liberty from Boston, Massachusetts, and their actions on December sixteenth, seventeen seventy-three, with the following statement: "No taxation without representation. Do the work, but more importantly, do the right thing using available data, no emotion, when it comes to regulation." Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next speaker. Ms. Gallo.
Good afternoon. I belong to several organizations that I'm active with, taxpayers and the Association of Realtors, and I'm not authorized to represent them at all, and so these are my opinions only. And it seems like there's some good news that's been happening, and some things are working, but they're not mentioned very much. We have an existing urgency ordinance, which was kind of intended to be a ban or quasi-ban, but established regulations. And under those regulations, certain things were discovered. Those people that were registered didn't have any problems with the environment. There were no environmental concerns, according to our agricultural commissioner, who inspected those sites. Also, crime practically disappeared, according to the sheriff. So we find that regulation can work. That hasn't been discussed so far. We've been doing something right. We can improve on that. There's a really famous man in our county named Barton Stevenow. I never realized how great that man is and was. He died recently. Barton approached regulation by identifying the problems that neighbors were having, or the public was having, and then setting up a process or a regulation that would address those concerns. His foresight on that, combined with treating cannabis as a land use, seems to be the solution. We have a planning commission, which is, I think, doing a good job, and they've come across with two alternatives, one of them being regulation. This seems to make sense. The important thing is not to take this regulation and try to make it into a ban by making it so impossible for people to farm that they just can't do it. You've got to be careful about that. Also, we may not always have high prices of cannabis. I understand there's some, last year's crop can't be sold at the present prices, which means it could be price reductions that would hurt the growers. The free-market economy really works. The biggest, oh, I don't have enough time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, honorable supervisors, county staff, sheriff. My name is Jack Norton. I'm a Calaveras resident and a registered farmer in District One. I'm also co-leader of the Calaveras County Stakeholders Group. I realize that not everybody in this room, and certainly not everybody in this county, has had--
Sir, I'm going to ask you to speak to the microphone--
Yes, sir.
--because the folks can't hear it out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Not everybody in this room and not everybody in this county has had an open dialogue with legal cannabis farmers, so I'd just like to extend an invitation to anybody that would like to take the chance to do that. Feel free to contact me if you see me around town or here at the meeting. I'd be happy to speak with you. And actually, let me take a second just to start that dialogue with whoever might be interested, by saying a few things about myself. I'm a former Boy Scout. I'm the son and grandson of farmers, and I came here to Calaveras County to farm and be a part of the new legal cannabis industry. But that's not the only reason I came here. I also came here for the Calaveras way of life as well. I deeply appreciate my neighbors, who treat me like family, and the locals, who welcome me with open arms. I love the natural resources here, the golden hills here in District One, the McCollum Me, the Calaveras, the Stanislaus Rivers. I like, I'm a member of the Calaveras Historical Society, and I like to say, tell people that the history here is imminent, as in it's waiting around every corner. I feel it when I walk down the high sidewalks here downtown, or when I visit the assay office behind the old courthouse. It's there when I'm exploring my land and I see the old mines or the grinding stones. I came here to Calaveras to farm, but I stay here to be a part of this history. Now, to some, I may look different or seem like an outsider, but I promise we're more alike than not. I want to be a proud, upstanding member of this county. I want my family to be proud of me. I even brought my father here today. Well, thanks for that time. That's enough about me. What I'd like to do is ask you, Board, not to ban commercial cultivation. The regulation proposal presented by the planning commission represents many compromises on all sides of the issue. They say something that doesn't make either party happy is a good compromise. The stakeholders group has presented the board and clerk with suggestions that could make the regulations more acceptable for everyone. Thank you, clerk.
I am Trent Fiorino, District One. And there's been a lot of talk about how important it is that we get tax money from cannabis to fund our county. But if you read carefully the state law that regulates cannabis, and I believe even in our county regulation, it tells us that cannabis is still illegal nationally. In fact, the cultivation and sale of cannabis is considered organized crime under the RICO Act. There is a case going through the courts where a family is suing cannabis farms for the odor under the RICO Act, and it was passed forward by the district courts, saying, yes, this is a violation under the RICO Act. It's sad that we're looking at funding our county, funding our police force, with money that is illegal under national law, considered organized crime. Is that really where we want to go in this county? Now, I'd say if they legalize it nationally, that's a whole different argument then, but it's still illegal nationally. And the only reason some of these people are not being prosecuted is because, right now, they're tying up money to allow them to do that. That could change at any day, and things could really begin to change in our county when we see them coming in and beginning to arrest people that are registered. Now, the other thing about regulation that drives me crazy is the fact that we call this regulation, but it's really self-regulation. We sign these people up, tell them they can grow, and then nobody has the time to go back and check on them, so we don't really know what they're doing. We hear that there's no crime on regulated grows, although I know there was a regulated grow near us that were shooting off weapons late at night, and from what I understand, they confiscated a number of illegal weapons on that site. But that doesn't get reported then as being a registered grow. It's reported as illegal firearms, and so it doesn't show up in the statistics. You know, that's how we're playing games here. We don't need cannabis in this county. I would be one that would step forward and say, if we need to fund our county better, why not raise sales tax in this county? I'd happily pay more in sales tax to take care of our police department, our fire department, and other things. And I would challenge everybody that's in here that's in favor of a ban to stand up and say they'd do the same. I'd pay as much as a penny more on my sales tax in this county if that's what we need. But why don't we look at other funding sources instead of acting like this is the only funding source that's available to us? And the other thing is, is that statistics say that seventy percent of the black market cannabis comes from California. It was just another bust of somebody that was trying to sell cannabis from this county in another state. Just happened again. So is that really what we want to do, is support the black market? That's what we're doing. We need this ban. We're asking you to vote for the ban.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Jessica Clofe. I'm from Valley Springs, voting member. I'm also a legal complaint cultivator. We've talked a lot about a ban, and I think we've heard a lot of points as well that say we won't always be able to eliminate everything. We won't always be able to eliminate everyone not complying. They will always be there. So how do we improve? How do we support the ones who are following the rules, the ones who are helping the other industries, other than cannabis? I think it was a really good point that how many other industries and people will be affected by this. You know, like the sheriff had mentioned, it's a lot of people that help the sheriff department. We watch our neighbors, and we watch our neighborhoods, and we speak to each other. Whether you're for cannabis or not, that's needed. So by supporting compliant cultivators and supporting the all-agreed efforts of protecting our environment and protecting our neighbors and supporting our county, that there helps prevent the ones who are not complying and the ones causing the majority of the problems. For regulation, I agree that the more strict we make the regulation, the less good farmers we have around. If we restrict the regulation so much to where, say, ninety percent of the farmers are not allowed, that includes the majority of the compliant, safe, cooperating farms that are really making the majority of that Measure C tax that's being brought in. Even if we do regulate it too strictly, that really affects that Measure C tax, which affects everything. The location, you know, I come from an agricultural family, tobacco farmers, and so land use is important. I teach my kids that I want to live off my land and to be as sustainable as possible. So if rural agricultural example were to be eliminated, you know, I see my neighbors are wine, you know, I have a vineyard right next to me and a cattle right next to me. Then if I'm told that my area, I'm not allowed to cultivate cannabis, it seems to be against the purpose of the rural agricultural means, which is to grow agriculture and to grow business, not to halt it. Moving farms could then pose a large risk as far as compliance. If they're able to bring the one farm at the one location into compliance and follow, and then they're able, they're forced to get up and move, the chances of them being fully compliant or possibly, you know, is much harder. Wow, that time goes by fast. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Board. Bill Petrow, District Three resident, and also regional director for SEIU Ten to One. The union is concerned that if the board votes to ban rather than regulate, our members, your employees, will bear the consequences. Our members, your employees, have not seen a wage increase in over two years. Despite the additional recently hired employees into the bargaining unit, the unit still realized a decrease of overall numbers during the last pay period. How could that happen? The county still does not and cannot pay enough to keep quality employees. A ban kills off the revenue stream that would enable the county to provide competitive wages and benefits to keep local residents working here. Our members, your employees, asked Supervisor Toffinelli to explain to us where the replacement revenue would come from, but he declined to answer our members, his employees. The county is currently using Measure C funds to balance the budget. What happens when you choose to get rid of those funds? I think we heard a little bit of that earlier. We fear loss of jobs through layoffs, loss of services through budget cuts, and additional strain on social services that will be woefully understaffed. Our members, your employees, struggle on a weekly basis, making hard decisions on how to meet life's challenges. Your decision today could add to that struggle. Your decision today could not only impact the lives of county employees, but those of the families of cultivators who face the same struggles as everyone else, trying to raise families, provide for their children, or perhaps even providing for their aging parents. A vote to ban sends a message to your employees and to the community that you do not support working families, but support the agenda of a few who wish to see no prosperity in Calaveras County. Not only will the county be throwing away roughly fifteen million dollars in taxes and fees per year, the county will also be throwing away any chance of-- year, the county will also be throwing away any chance of Prop 64 monies that would be earmarked for prevention in law enforcement programs. Earlier, it was talked about maybe alternative revenue streams, and perhaps maybe we should think about taxing the churches who decide to get politically active. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, if you intend to speak to give the Board and the meeting some indication, I'm going to request that you stand by the doors, but limit that to no more than five Ma'am, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Are you ready?
Yes. Hi, my name is Ann Hill, District Two, and I live in McCullumney Hill. I say ban the pot. In the ordinance 17.95, there's a section that said about organic growing, but there are no standards written that explain what organic growing is, and there's a wide variety even in the cereal industry. I say ban dispensaries because there are also many loopholes that are detrimental to the public safety. The A1 area, the ag area, I have asked people in my area, and I haven't found anyone who says that they want growing in their neighborhood. Nobody. Nobody wants it growing in their neighborhood. So for those of us that chose to live in a less populated area, and we haven't, we don't want the pop growing in our area just because we chose to live not where we have another house 10 feet from ours. So it's not fair to us either. So my vote on this issue should count just as much as the next person's in our county, and I don't want it, not in my neighborhood. The water. Calaveras County is the water source for drinking water for the valley and much of California. So what's going to happen when California is sued down the road for contaminated water? And where are we going to get the money to pay for the lawsuits when we have contaminated people all over the state with our dirty water? On the EIR, what I heard earlier, something to the effect of if a grower uses 10% of the water usage and they have to back off and not use some, well, who's the Water Patrol Monitor who's going to monitor how much water somebody can use? And what is the beginning level of the water? And then what is 10% of that? And what is backing off mean? This is crazy. So that's dumb. So for two years, the majority of the people in this county have asked for a ban, and we're still waiting. I hear over and over, these people want to grow, they want to grow, they want to grow. Great! Let them grow potatoes, carrots, onions, celery. Everybody would benefit from that, and nobody would care. And there wouldn't be any thieving or anything else. Let them grow good product instead of crappy product, which is also federally illegal. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have one more speaker, then we'll be taking a break.
Good afternoon. Vicki Ranky, Angels Camp. Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit direct to today's agenda and to the ordinance before 1795. When I read the agenda, I read, you know, conduct a public hearing, rescinding Chapter 1794, replacing with new Chapter 1795 banning or regulating cannabis. Where in the world did this regulating cannabis come from? We've been talking about this for two years. And I was here the day that this Board asked the county to put in a ban ordinance, and we thought we would see it around March or April, and we, today is finally here. But they're still talking about regulating. Nobody has, you know, I hate to say this, but sometimes I wonder who's in charge here because I heard you say to do a ban, and now here we are again talking about regulation. There's something wrong with this. And as you all know, we have tried as citizens to put this on a ballot so that we could all, because a lot of people will not come here, they will not go out in the public about this issue because they're afraid, and they wanted to vote on this. Our vote was taken away from the people, and somebody mentioned earlier how wonderful it is to be able to vote. We believe that, too, and that's why we tried to put this on a ballot, and every time, we were sabotaged by the big marijuana, the big marijuana lawyers. I don't know how else to word that. But we're the people. We don't have big lawyers. We don't have a lot of money. We have you. We hire, we elect you to take care of us and our county. And I talked to a lot of people who have lived here for generations. They don't want it here. They like the communities that they have. It's going to change the whole character of this community, and we don't want that to happen here. So that was one thing that was a bit of a surprise, and here we are today, spending hours and hours and hours talking about regulation, when today we were supposed to talk about a ban. So I wanted to add...
Mr. Frye, Mr. Frye.
Sorry.
Please, let her have her three minutes. Give her back five seconds. Thank you, sir.
So anyway, that's part of the thing, and you guys all know this, you know the whole story. So the other thing, in the ordinance itself, I think it needs to be included, is the micro business as a banned activity. A micro business came in on Prop 64, and if you read the definition of a micro business, it's a scary thing. It's saying you can cultivate, you can manufacture, and you can sell it right there in your little property. And we don't want that here, obviously. We don't want commercial cultivation of marijuana.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be taking a 10-minute break right now. Ladies and gentlemen, that was a 10-minute break. We want to get out of here before midnight. I have one question. Is Mr. Patron still present? I don't know if he is, if he's in the hallway.
He's outside. The Speaker is...
Okay. Not a problem, then. There he is. Mr. Patron, I have a quick question. You were speaking as a member of SICU for SICU or as an individual citizen?
Well, it's SEIU, and I was speaking as SEIU.
All right. Thank you, sir.
On behalf of our members.
Well, we couldn't start without coffee. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if we can be seated and get started. Can we have speakers lined up at the door?
My name is Margaret Cornell, and I'm in Supervisor Garmendy's district. How did all of this mess start? It started after the fire, when suddenly people couldn't keep their property anymore because they didn't have enough insurance and they couldn't afford to build. So their property went cheap. And who was it that came and bought it? Was it local people? You know who it was. And then we had a big problem. Everybody wanted to buy property to raise cannabis, and they did. And now we're in a big mess. And most of what I heard here is what they came for: money. Everybody is talking about the money. What about the effect that cannabis, marijuana, has on the human body? One person talking about Colorado mentioned how young some of the children were dying from it. Why? Because their parents smoked it? Do we know that cigarette smoke is bad for people? Of course we do. So now it's up to you. Are you going to go for the money? Or are you going to figure out a way that we can solve this problem without killing the children? Our children are important. I don't belong to any special organization. I'm a mom. I have six children, 20 grandchildren, 32 great-grandchildren. I care about every single one of them. I go through their names every night when I pray because we live in such an upset world right now in California. We lead the country in not good things. Our state voted for recreational marijuana. What were we thinking of? Money? Yes. It was against the federal government, so California is against the government. We all know that. We're ignoring it. Wake up, people. Our country is in trouble. Our state is in trouble. Think of the children. Think about your children, your grandchildren. They're important. They will grow up. Some of them won't go the way you want them to. They'll stray for a while, like mine did, but they'll come back. Train them. Teach them what is right. It isn't the money that's going to make them decent people. It's what you teach them, the principles of what is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, I'll buy that clapping. Excuse me. Ladies and gentlemen, I've just been informed that in Murphys, there is an evacuation on, going on right now due to a gas leak on Main Street. I don't know the extent of the evacuation nor any further details. Once I be apprised of that, I'll report out and let everybody know. Okay? Mr. Foley?
Yes, my name's Ken Foley. I'm an attorney here. I've been on all sides of this issue over the last 15 years, and I have to tell you, I've switched positions multiple times over this time period. The biggest fear that I saw to the county was the increase in crime and deaths that occurred with the advent of the licenses under the emergency ordinance. Now, I was just thinking, when was the last time we had a reported incident? And it seems like things have calmed down somewhat. The problem I see is, what is it, in 2016, 2016, this county told people, come here, pay us $5,000 and be legal, and we'll let you grow marijuana. It's only a year later, and we're thinking about doing a ban? The same county is thinking of doing a ban on marijuana that a year ago induced people to give them their money and participate in what was supposed to be an organized legal effort to grow marijuana. I just wanted to tell you that I think the solution to whatever direction you go in really is in the sheriff's hands. Because I believe if the sheriff believes with assistance and financial aid, he can control the county and do the supervision that's necessary, then we don't really have the personal fears that some of us may have had about two years ago. So that's all I wanted to say. It's a tough decision, but, you know, you keep flip-flopping, and that just creates tremendous instability. And, you know, I don't know how the county's going to progress in the future if we do a complete reversal at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Megan Gonzalez. I am the co-owner of Rolling Hills Bookkeeping here in San Andres. I have something to say to each supervisor. So Supervisors Garmendy and Olivera, I just want to thank you both for your continued candor and the consistent logic behind the very difficult decisions you must make. You have both proven in word and action your genuine care and concern for the betterment and safety of Calaveras, and I applaud you for it. Supervisors Mills and Clapp, I sincerely hope you have both chosen to listen to your staff today, the sheriff included, instead of the loud, backward-thinking voices of a few of your constituents. Supervisor Toffenelli, as you know, I'm a business owner in your district. I look to you for leadership and wise decision-making for the betterment of our county. Your campaign promise was to build our economy through employment and provide a bright future for the citizens of Calaveras. How bright could that future be by shutting out this county's biggest economic boom since the gold rush? Regulations and enforcement of the law is the only way this situation can work. If you vote to ban, you will be shuttering the doors of legal compliant farms, ancillary businesses like mine, and feeding right into the hands of illegal farmers. They want you to ban because they know you won't be able to enforce it. Any hope of eradicating these illegal, unregistered farms lies in taxation of compliant registered growers. I want to leave you with a quote, "Nothing is more destructive of respect for the government and the law of the land than the passing of laws which cannot be enforced." That's a quote from Albert Einstein that you cited on your Facebook page during your campaign, Mr. Toffenelli. I found it very fitting considering where we find ourselves today. If you vote to ban, you will be passing a law that will be impossible to enforce. Those who care enough to abide by it will close, leave, and you will be left with nothing but a ghost town of a retirement community surrounded by gun-toting partels that you can't afford to shut down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Thanks for listening. I'm George Stevens, and I want to state that I'm adamantly opposed to any type of commercial marijuana activity in our county, and these are just a few reasons. First of all, I believe the whole industry in our county is based on a hell-conceived illegal foundation. The county says last year, or whatever the date of the initial registration was, please demonstrate to us that you are already breaking the law by illegally growing, and we'll allow you to apply for a permit. And the pot growers say, well, we were bad then, but we'll be good now. We'll follow your regulations. I think that's very naive to assume they will. I think perhaps the most compelling reason for the complete ban is the known and unknown environmental impacts to our county, both in the short and long term. I believe it's an environmental time bomb, and also allowing it in residential areas with many of them dependent on wells with poor water tables is unacceptable. And commercial pot should be no exception. The past board violated their own zoning laws by allowing this activity in residential areas. The pot growers continue to refer, many of them refer themselves as stakeholders. They are not stakeholders. They have no claim to assume that, since they are here and growing, that they have a claim or a stake to continue. They don't. They did this on the come, knowing full well that this was a temporary ordinance. It was further subject to more investigation and finding out about environmental impacts. Past performance is usually the best indicator of future performance. Based on this, the county has demonstrated a woefully inadequate ability to regulate and monitor this greedy industry. I'd like, a question I'd like to ask... A question I'd like to ask staff at your discretion is, how many grows have been re-inspected for compliance since they are issued their permits? By allowing commercial growing in our county, I believe you're gambling with the safety, welfare, and health of both citizens and the environment of Calaveras County. Please vote for the ban.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Oh, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. Going down to my garden, feeling sad. Well, I'm going down to my garden, feeling bad. I'm going down to my garden, feeling mad, oh, Lord. And I ain't gonna be treated this way. The county wants to stop me from growing pot. 'Cause I live on a five-acre plot. They think I'm able to move, but I'm not, oh, Lord. And I ain't gonna be treated this way. It seems like you want to stop the small farms. Well, then Marlboro Camel and Walmart would turn on the charms. Their farms would cause so much harm, oh, Lord. And we ain't gonna be treated this way. Cannabis is a pretty smelly plant. And it seems that's why some folks start to rant. We try to get them to chill out, but they can't, oh, Lord. And we ain't gonna be treated that way. We could be a dairy farm instead. Or turkeys or pigs with 5,000 head. Or an asphalt plant with fumes that'll go to your head. But we're not. And we ain't gonna be treated this way. 'Cause it's a smell you'll be accustomed to. Lose myself. 'Cause it's a smell you'll become accustomed to. I once didn't like it, but now I do. It's true. And it's only smelly for three months or two. We ain't gonna be treated this way. Then you say you'll go back to the ban. But I'm starting to think that that's all just a sham. 'Cause I don't think that you really can, oh, Lord. 'Cause you'll bankrupt the county if you do. So let me grow my ganja where it's sunny. And I'll keep on paying taxes and making money. But I'm not gonna move or tear down my garden, honey. I just ain't gonna be treated this way. I wasn't sure if I could make it here. 'Cause it's harvest time, and my time is pretty dear. Kind of feels like you didn't want us here. Oh, Lord. We ain't gonna be treated that way. Now I have to go, 'cause I have lots of work to do. And I haven't slept properly in weeks, it's true. 'Cause I'm working hard, just like all of you, oh, Lord. And I ain't gonna be treated this way.
Thank you, ma'am. No. Ladies and gentlemen, please be advised that you have only one opportunity to speak on each individual agenda item.
Oh, hi. Are we ready?
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a speaker at the podium. Please show a little respect.
My name is Patty Johnston, and I'm from Murphys. And first of all, I tip my hat to you, Mr. Garmendy, for understanding the importance of beneficial change in our community and realizing that with proper regulation, we can grow cannabis in Calaveras. Regulation is not a bad thing, but parts of the current proposal needs, um, hang on, I had to fix this, need reevaluating. There are many, such as myself and my family, that live on a rural residential five-acre parcel. Many of my neighbors are also registered growers. We have all abided by the current regulations and paid our required fees and taxes. A ban on a five-acre parcel in no way considers a financial investment we have already put into our farms. Moving is not an option. I've lived on my five acres for 28 years and raised four children here. My husband passed away 10 years ago. I'm 65 and retired, and my cannabis farm is now a big part of my income. We live on our property, have two wells, and only use organic products. If you ban many of these mom-and-pop grows who are on five acres and support our community... Wait, I didn't say that right. Anyway, we live here, and you will end up with Walmart grows and corporate takeover. Is that what you want? We, the people of our community, are the heartbeat of Calaveras and our wonderful towns. A ban is also unrealistic. If you do this, you will be shocked by the domino effect this will have on cannabis, on Calaveras, on Calaveras financially. Think about that. Those of us that have followed the rules or regulations should be allowed to continue our farms. Please take more time to discuss all options. Thank you.
Thank you. You can't speak, sir. You've already had your opportunity. What, sir? You've already had your opportunity. You're allowed one opportunity for each agenda item. So, sir, you'll have an opportunity. Maybe it's the next board meeting, but right now, your opportunity is over. Okay?
Hi. I still have trucks going up the road, and the food-grade barrels are laying down. And then, when they start coming back, they have the barrels up, and they have a makeshift top on them. And the sheriff was, um, told us that he wasn't, it's legal to, pot is legal. And that wasn't a consideration. But then I smelled one that smelled like propane, and so they were interested in that. So, the vision of the general plan is one that is not compatible with the marijuana trade. It is like a monster that has taken over every aspect of Calaveras' life. The argument that we need the money is because it is all spent on marijuana. This and marijuana that. It will continue to suck the life out of us and the government employees. Dispensaries and micro-businesses should be banned in the ban document. They should not be kept separate. To do so would only encourage more unpermitted growers to trash Calaveras County. This board has been in place for 10 months. You've directed your staff to write up a ban. They have deliberately drugged their feet, hoping your heads would be turned by money, and now the fear of lawsuits. The tail continues to wig the dog. Marijuana is a gateway drug which, like others, requires more and more to get the same high, which leads to stronger drugs. The DEA goes across state lines, and we are not exempt. If Calaveras doesn't put a stop to elevating a Schedule I drug to governmental addictive fiscal prominence, our county will forever be looking over its shoulders. California does not recognize medical marijuana as opposed to recreational marijuana. The so-called dispensaries will be the pot shops they really are, or joints, as they were called in the days of yore. Pot smokers recently smoked marijuana in public, even at the government center on their way to their cars. There are permitted grows which are contiguous with unpermitted grows. There are reports of dispensaries not allowing regulators on their premises. They have been known to sell out the back door. The permitted grows in this county are underinspected. The dump and transfer stations have been stressed with added activity.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. Ms. Morris?
Thank you. Dina Morris, Calaveras County. I come here today to beg you, please, no more delays. I was led to believe last year before the urgency ordinance passed that the supervisor of my district and another supervisor were going to help me, and we were looking towards a ban. Actually, there was two supervisors, three supervisors total. But I found out on May 10, 2016, that that wasn't quite the case with two of the three. And I remember specifically telling one of those supervisors that they aren't here today, that regulation would not help the situation in my neighborhood, that it would not get rid of the bad growers. And guess what? As I stand here speaking to you today, they are still in my neighborhood. They still continue to intimidate, harass, and threaten the neighbors. They continue to live in tents and trailers on the properties. They continue to ignore the laws. Traffic going by my house every night, lots of traffic recently, on a little country road that's already tore up badly. What happened was, this isn't a bait and switch. It was a temporary ordinance, and everyone knew that. It was temporary, so there's no guarantee. But the problem is that it forced all of your citizens into this situation, into this giant experiment that is experimenting with lives. My family, myself and my husband, we've invested our life savings into our home. So if we are forced to move, we will lose a lot of our property value, simply because it narrows the market down for buyers that want to buy surrounded by commercial marijuana grows. And they're not going to invest in my house. It's, they like to take minimal houses and land. It's all about the land. But anyway, so, it's the legal grows that have been causing the problems. Now, I know that the sheriff has recently eradicated two illegal grows in my neighborhood. Those guys weren't the problem. They weren't the ones harassing me, intimidating me, and my family, and my friends, and neighbors. They weren't the ones that trapped my husband and threatened him. "If you ever come down this public road again, we'll take care of you." And then, one week later, come running down their driveway with their AR-15s, telling my other neighbor, "Uh-huh, you want to come here?"
Thank you.
Please ban.
Don't ask about the bottom of the computer, it's a long story. Good afternoon, Board. Crystal Key C, District 1 voter and registered farmer. I am one of the scary outsiders who came here to grow regulated cannabis. I have two Ivy League undergraduate degrees and a master's degree from a California university. I have four children between the ages of 10 and 16. All of them have 4.0 GPAs or higher. I have been a field biologist in the state of California for the last 24 years and have owned my environmental consulting business since 2001. I am co-leader of the Calaveras Cannabis Stakeholders Group. Our neighbors support our operation. We have paid for road improvements and fire prevention where we are located. Our farm grows 100% pesticide-free cannabis that would meet organic standards, if there were organic standards for our product. The medicine for my farm has been turned into treatments for ovarian cancer, breast cancer, epilepsy, and for children suffering from the effects of chemotherapy. It is unreasonable to change the rules after the game has already started. If you ban it, our farm will fold because we are law-abiding citizens. We will not stay here if it is not permitted. If you choose to adopt the regulatory recommendations of your planning commission, our farm will be zoned out, even though I have an ag parcel. I'm here to speak for the concept of grandfathering. In order for us to comply with those regulations, even though we own an ag parcel, we'll have to purchase our neighbors' 10 acres, merge the parcels, and move the farm for a third time. This is a difficult but not impossible. We are willing to make the significant additional financial investments so that the cancer patients, PTSD sufferers, epileptics, and children needing chemotherapy relief can continue to benefit from the medicine we grow from them. Please, Honorable Board, vote to allow this educated, entrepreneurial, community-volunteering, advocate-for-the-environment, and mother to continue to be the healthy and safe supplier of medicine for those who need it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Breckins Alvis. I'm the co-owner of Rolling Hills Bookkeeping. I'm wanting to speak to mainly you, Mr. Tofanelli. We're in your district with our business. We currently supply four salaries out of your district for our employees, not naming the CPAs that work for us. Last week alone, I had three local bookkeepers that were out of work looking for work with us. And I cannot hire them because I'm not going to turn around and lay them off two months later if this ban goes through. The money is not just in cannabis. And I'm sorry for anybody that wants to sit back and say, "Oh, they're here for the money." Yeah, our lives are controlled by money. Absolutely. The only reason any of us go to work, open a business, is for the money, because that allows us to take care of our families. Business is what's needed here. There's plenty of other local businesses down the stretch of San Andreas that are too afraid to come out and speak to this because they're worried about how it's going to affect... One of which says he's worried a rock's going to come through his front window, and I believe you spoke with him yesterday. It is not just the cannabis guys are going to be affected by this. Obviously, yes, they have a lot of money. I know how much money they've spent. But there's a lot of us that have invested plenty of money into this. I've heard a lot of people mention the federal government, thinking they're stating that this is an illegal drug. While they do say that on Fox 40, however, they turn around and they accept tax dollars from it every day. The amount of 1040 EZ and 3986 vouchers I've cut the last two weeks amounts to over hundreds of thousands of dollars donated to IRS. So if it's illegal, they're accepting the dirty pot money. To finish, and I'm sorry, I'm a little shaky right now, I'm still pretty pissed off, Mr. Supervisors Mills and Clapp, what you guys just showed there was atrocious. You guys were elected into a position to sit and listen to every one of your constituents, whether they are writing you, voicing it, or singing it. Your personal opinion does not matter up there, does it? You're here to do what your constituents ask you to do. I think that spoke a whole lot to you guys' character.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Adam Ray, District 2. I'm a longtime Calaveras resident. I'm with the sheriff, and I'm a good old Calaveras boy. Grew up here on my father's farm out in Mount Ranch. Been in the family since the 70s, and we just have deep roots here in Calaveras. We, uh, we were really affected in the Butte Fire. Our property, we had been working on since I was a little boy, planting trees, and we had a tree farm. And after the Butte Fire, you know, our property is now a moonscape. My elderly parents were forced to leave the area because we don't have a single thing left on our property. We, my family, my young son, my wife, we decided to stay and try to put our property back together. And when the urgency ordinance was put out there, it was an avenue for us to repurpose our land. And we came in, complied. This talk about the us not being regulated, I've been inspected. I've had, you know, the sheriff's department code compliance down on my property, welcomed them in. We've jumped through every hoop. We've cut over $100,000 in tax revenue so far this year to the county. And we just want to play a fair game, and we want a fair shake at it. Felt like, feels like changing the game midway is disingenuous and unfair. Being here today and listening to everybody has been, for me, really, really inspiring. I mean, we live in America. We get to listen to people's differing opinions. We may not agree, but when it comes down to it, we're all Americans. We want what's best for our kids. I don't think anyone on either side of this issue wishes harm on kids. That's just not, that's just not what anybody's out for. that's just not what anybody's out for. We have differing opinions, we get to sit in these chambers and we get to listen to different people's perspectives, and we get to look at the facts and make good, clean, educated decisions on what's going to be best for our county. I hope you guys take the time to really look at the facts and take the time to listen to the people that are here talking to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Susan Morris, District Four.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll determine that. I don't believe Ms. Morris has spoken, am I correct?
I haven't.
Please proceed. I've already made a decision, she'll be allowed to speak.
I've just been sitting here, I've been to many of these meetings in the last year and a half, two years, and I've listened carefully at every meeting, and if I haven't been at the meeting, I've been watching on the video. And I'm really concerned that this community is becoming lawless. People come up here and they tell, they say, "Well, the sheriff can't enforce it, there's not enough people." Well, let me tell you, I don't need to have the sheriff catch me doing something wrong, I need not to do it, and I would hope that all of us in this community would be like We don't have to be told by the police officer, or the sheriff, or anyone, that this is against the rules, don't do it, we should know that. And the other thing is, the reason I walked out of here a few minutes ago is, this tribunal here is being allowed to be disrespected, and that's very bothersome to me. And it shouldn't ever happen, and I really mean it. It's not okay to make fun of this hearing, it's not okay. And the only way we can let people know that it's not okay is to not participate in it. So I'm just telling you that there is a whole group of people here that are not lawless, they don't want to be disrespectful to this tribunal here, and they're proud of our community, and they want to be proud of our local government. This is what we have here, and we all ought to stand for it, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
A lot of you probably know what I might say already. I am in Supervisor's Mills District, and I heard somebody talk about the Sons of Liberty, and that actually was one of my great-great-great-grandfathers, so he was friends with Paul Revere, so I kind of know a little bit about liberty and fighting for good causes. I've heard a lot about business today, high-risk, high-reward speculative business that a number of people have gotten in, and really, there's never been a business that got into business that had a guarantee that they were going to make it. It's just part of doing business in America. So I find that argument to be not very valid. I want to talk to you a little bit about some of the crime in Copperopolis. There's been a lot of water theft, here's a particular vehicle that, on July 21st, stealing water from CCWD. Here's another guy, this guy was, this guy's pretty famous, actually, in Copperopolis. July 25th, the sheriff was there, he went up and down with a 500-gallon container of water, five times that we know of. Here's another guy, this guy, this guy we've seen around town three times, he probably has a 500-gallon container. I don't know how much he has stolen, but I can tell you something, they pay $10 a month for their water, we pay, what, $185 every two months? How is that fair? Who knows if they're stealing that water or not, we don't know. So anyway, also, Foothill Sanitation did give me the okay to talk about this, they were recently broken into, I'm sure the sheriff probably knows that, they went through every truck, they took shovels and rakes and hoses and whatnot. You know the other thing they stole? Water. They stole 150 gallons of water. So Kevin in Foothill goes, "Gee, I wonder who needs water." So, you know, we can talk about the federal law, you've heard me talk about federal law, there was a resolution from CCRP, we know that it's against federal law, we know that it's the Controlled Substance Act that does not give medical marijuana any kind of exemption, we know the FDA has its schedule as the Schedule I drug, we understand that money laundering is against federal law, under US 181957 and 1956, we could be guilty of money laundering in this county. The FDA and the DEA has not approved marijuana as a medicine, it's not approved, this is an experiment, gentlemen, this is an experiment. Also, there's not a single fertilizer, well, here we go.
Mr. McManus?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, rest of the board, Bill McManus of Ban Committee. You know, I knew this was going to be a grind of a day, so I was trying to think of ways to try to get through it, keeping single thoughts to push through and try to reach is kind of pointless. So I thought instead I'd just entertain myself, and there's no lack of ammunition here, to try to identify all the fairy tales that we hear on this subject. The first fairy tale is, "Not everyone is entertained, and dignity is not brought to this chamber with stoner karaoke," that's a fairy tale. Another fairy tale is, "Pot is not medicine," or "pot is medicine," we know, that's true, we've learned over the years, some of you have been here a long time. We know that it's a fairy tale that farmers grow medicine, they don't, they're here to make money. We've been hearing over and over and over again that regulation works. I don't know what wormhole these people walk through, they are in a different universe. We have seen three years of regulation be a complete and total failure. The Planning Department in collaboration with County Council has failed to deliver an ordinance that can be enforced, lots of regulations, pages, none of it enforced. As I have said many times before, regulation without enforcement is chaos, and what this county has had for two or three years now is pure 100% chaos. When I look at the ordinance that came from County Council and the Planning Commission or Planning Director, says 1795 is a ban, no it isn't, it's not a ban, it is a prohibition and a partial ban. You didn't ban dispensaries, the first incarnation had it specifically exempted right on the front page. This one is a little bit more clever, they wait until they get to, oh, it is the first page, .95.010, "While retaining the ability of patients to have access to medical cannabis in the county to the extent deemed necessary under state law," there is no state law that requires dispensaries, none. We can go on and on and on again with the fairy tales that are being told, and someone is expected to believe them, even the EIR, they point out that they took in the financial element on the EIR, that if you ban, it's going to hurt, you run out of money. What they didn't tell you is if you do ban, there's going to be lots of draft money available to you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Gentlemen, Tim McDonald, District One voter. I'm a big fan, being an American, being a Californian, being a Calaveras County resident. I stopped watching the NFL this year, for one simple reason, they're kneeling for the flag, it's a disrespect for the people who've served with that flag, I believe. And I believe when someone is exercising their First Amendment rights, and an elected official gets up and shows his backside during that, it's pretty much the same thing. Nice work, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Gina Gonzalez-Angels Camp, Dennis's constituent, very proud. Just to let you guys know what regulation has done for me. My husband's a hunter, went up one of the roads about three weeks ago, was attacked by a legal grows pit bull. We turned it into animal services, of course, they're overwhelmed, so we ended up having to pull a gun, he's a CCW, he carries a license, and he carries his handgun, and he had a shotgun, could have blown the dog from here tomorrow, but he didn't. But let me tell you something, it's not a reality that everybody sees, some people, as you think, Mr. District Two, that it's a wonderful thing, Mr. Olivera, you think it's going to bring money to our county, you know what it's going to bring? More crime. You're in the crime industry, you understand the background, you know exactly how we feel, you have lived it, you have seen the problems with this, you understand what the EIR is telling you, but the EIR was changed a little bit. I don't think that's right, and I don't think that's just. We are asking for a ban for many reasons, we aren't gaining anything in our pocketbooks, we aren't gaining anything in property values, I'm never going to leave. But you know what? They have a lot to risk. They can also grow tomatoes, they can grow corn, they can grow hay, they can grow many other things, we don't need that money. What we need is regulation, if it's going to be regulated, it's going to be regulated hard, real hard, which I don't think will work in this county, because I don't think anybody here has the job that can handle it. My opinion is to ban it, wait till the federal government steps up and does it right, and then we come after them, because the federal government is our father, we need to watch what the federal government does, and then we step up to the plate. But until then, we are not ready to open this can of worms that's been opened without our vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Mr. Malvey?
Mike Malvey, District Two. Just a number here, not 100% accurate, but I've been keeping track. Ban speakers were 14 in favor of the ban, and let's call them pro-regulation, or not in favor of the ban, were 37, 37 14. So if you represent your constituents, not just in your districts, but overall county, that's a pretty clear mandate, and that's not even taken into consideration what our auditor and sheriff said. I don't know if they realize it or not, but they endorsed regulation, strict regulation. And I, as not one that's tied with the industry, appreciate that. A number two, I just heard the word fairy tale thrown out, a person was accusing members of an industry of living fairy tales, and he also used the word chaos that they have caused. I'll tell you who caused the chaos, the previous Board of Supervisors is who caused the chaos. So it's incumbent upon you, you can right that wrong, this is your chance. So 37 to 14 is a pretty strong number, need I say more?
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
I'm number 15, Jennifer Stewart, District Two. I have come to this podium a couple of times, been to a bunch of meetings, listened to everybody, and the stuff that I hear is shades of truth on some point of view, that, okay, let's talk about dispensaries. In Sacramento City, it was brought up by the pro-pot side, that they have lots of regulation, 31 dispensaries in Sacramento City, they did a surprise audit less than two weeks ago, and the press, KCRA, put out a report about it. The auditors went to five out of six dispensaries, they were denied access in a lot of those special areas where they wanted to find out if they were following all the regulations, if they were doing exactly what they were supposed to be doing, they found out they were not. And it just seems to me that if Sacramento City has all the auditors that they could possibly pay for, and we don't, how can we expect to regulate something that is irregulable? These people don't want to be regulated. It's obvious that there are so many grows out there that didn't even take the time to go fill out the paperwork to become legal. So all this has been said before, that's why the ban people haven't been getting up here and saying one more time, because you asked us, Mr. Olivera, if we don't have anything new to say, why? Why come up and talk about it? But we do, when it comes to arguing the point that we don't care, we don't have enough support, we don't worry about, all the things that they're saying we don't worry about. Like when they say there's no more crime, there must be a reduction in crime, that's not true. Our businesses have been threatened, we know, we know, there are certain businesses in town that have been threatened with boycott because they donated money to the ban. And when this particular restaurant owner said, "Bring it on if you're going to pick at me," we are in support of these people, these people that have been here for years, all of our families have been to these restaurants, and now the people that they hire during summer vacation, they're getting paid more under the table to be bud cutters than to bus tables. So do we want an illegal industry, or do we want to take our kids from a point where they're making money on a legal business that they can have on their resume? You can't put, "I was a bud cutter," when you go work for an IT company. But if you go say that, I'm done.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Judy Hurley, Mountain Ranch, citizen number 16 that is in favor of the ban. When we hear about all of the money problems that Calaveras County has, and we have not banned it, we've tried to regulate it, and then we hear about San Joaquin County, Tuolumne County, Amador County, all the other counties that have banned it, they have the same budget problems, you know, and it's not going away. Probably every county in California has budget problems due to the unfunded liabilities. So don't let that color your vote today, vote to ban it, it's too expensive to try to regulate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Board and Honorable Chair, Vivian Sechu, District One. Gentlemen, we have met during many Board of Supervisor meetings in this respected chamber for many weeks and recent months to debate the cannabis industry's future in our county, and we have to admit, we will honestly miss all of this when everything will come to an end, one way or another. Nevertheless, we do not believe that today is the day to debate, once again, the county's dire financial status, nor the technical aspects of a ban versus a regulation decision. When each of you decided to run for office, gentlemen, you knew that one day you would be called upon to make a very tough decision, and that you would have to live with the consequences of that decision. Some of you ran on an anti-cannabis platform that suits the ideological agenda of a relatively small base, but clearly does not represent the sentiment of the majority of our voter population. Now, gentlemen, the question is, what kind of political leader do you want to be remembered as? Do each of you recall the several references we have made in past public comments about your legacy in the eventuality of a ban vote? Do you want to be the kind of political leader who seeks support by appealing to popular passions and prejudices, or a leader who truly has the well-being of their jurisdiction and all their citizens at heart? When making this decision, have you thought about how many commercial businesses that thrive on the cannabis industry being in our county? Have you thought about the hardware stores, bars and restaurants, the wine industry, small businesses, and countless other commercial operations which greatly directly or indirectly benefit from the cannabis dollar? Have you thought about the many adult professionals and often even retired citizens who hold a medical cannabis card? And have you thought about the many hard-working and law-abiding cannabis farmers who, like yourselves, only want to work hard, pay their taxes, contribute to the betterment of our county, and send their children to the same schools where your children and grandchildren go? If you enact the ban or the alternative regulatory option, then the answer is obviously a resounding no. You haven't even thought about it, because you have decided to be ideological political leaders who hope to appeal to the passions and prejudices of the least common denominator. And in order to blindly pursue this ideological agenda, and therefore by definition in a non-particularly strong fact and evidence-based fashion, you would have to break the law at a local level and at a state level, and with the pursuit of this agenda to the very end, you would even have to violate fundamental constitutional rights and perhaps even civil rights. As already pointed out many times and for the last time, think carefully about your legacy, gentlemen. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mark Clark, District Two, number 17. I think you know where I stand.
I think you know where I stand. Ain't much I could say, heard this a thousand times. But I just kind of find it comical that two representatives from Cal-Normal come up here, tell the board that ain't nothing you can do. We're going to sit there and put it on the ballot next summer when this is the same group of people that took Measure B off the ballot. And had they not, we'd probably had our answer, one way or the other, and wouldn't be here at this meeting today. But the point I want to say to you is, I actually read the agenda packet and I want to talk about the agenda on the agricultural rezoning that was mentioned in there. There's a clause in there that, once they move, they have to have the prior piece of property that they were on cleaned up and inspected and everything before they can start on this one. Well, the urgency orders came up. The reason why the urgency orders came up, they were already operating their business. So then you were trying to sit there and regulate what they were already doing. But if they're going to start off new on a new piece of property, I think all the permits, all the inspections, electrical, everything else should be done prior before they even start planning on the new spot. Because they're starting out new, they need to have it all done like any other business. And that's just my statement.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Colleen Platt with myvellysprings.com. The goals of a permanent cannabis ordinance in Calaveras County should include the following. Maintain the health, safety and well-being of the county, its residents and environment. Minimize risks and complaints. Reduce environmental impacts to less than significant. And allow for potential economic and social benefits to property owners, businesses and residents. A new cannabis ordinance, whether called a ban or called a regulation, will ultimately be some mix of the concepts of bans and regulations. Regulations will ban cannabis grows in unacceptable locations. A ban will allow cannabis grows for personal and medical use under specific conditions. A permanent ordinance will be a combination of bans and regulations. Your job is to find the correct balance for Calaveras County. Supervisors have a range of alternatives to choose from here or to further modify. Commercial cannabis grows should be banned in residential areas. And strict restrictions on zoning setbacks, parcel sizes and other conditions such as organic cultivation could reduce impacts to less than significant while allowing for economic and social benefits. We encourage you to carefully consider the options and to determine feasibility of an ordinance. In order to determine feasibility, the environmental consultant for the EIR, I believe it's Mr. Jacobs, stated that the county may consider legal, economic and social impacts. Legal, economic and social impacts may be considered in your final ordinance decision. Please choose the best option that would maintain the health, safety and well-being of the county and would allow the best quality of life for all Calaveras residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Trevor Wickie, Calaveras Cannabis Alliance, District Two, longtime resident. Moved here when I was eight years old and grew up here. I went to Mountain Oaks Home School and I've been part of this community my entire life. I think that the prospect of what's about to come in front of you is really going to determine the future of this community and I hope that all of you make your decision accordingly. Quickly, Peter Mauer noted earlier that there is not an equally fleshed-out regulatory option for the board. I would say, or I believe that to properly consider the planning commission's recommendation that both a ban and a regulatory alternative be equally considered by the board, a regulatory ordinance should be included as part of fully fleshed-out regulatory ordinance should be included as part of this hearing today. Failure to do so prejudices these proceedings by not giving the board the ability to actually act on the regulatory option that was presented by the planning commission. But here's to my actual comments today. The unregulated cannabis industry provides no taxes, has provided no application fees, has not paid any money to the water board and does not follow any laws. They use toxic chemicals that they import from across international borders and bring into our area. This follows a pattern of behavior that goes on all throughout California. Marud Gabriel has analyzed trespass grows all over the state of California and has found the exact same problems in Calaveras that he has found up in other areas where he is doing his project. The environmental damage that is being done as a result of the illegal grows and the illicit cultivation is not associated with registered grows. Registered grows have provided $7.2 million in tax revenue, $3.7 million in fees to the county, another over a million dollars in fees to the Water Quality Control Board. The regulated compliant farms are compliant with all state and local laws, the Water Quality Control Board general order, and as track and trace regulations come on board in 2018, every one of these farms is going to have to be compliant with track and trace. And that is going to be where environmental and organic standards are going to be maintained. Because if anybody tries to pass something that had pesticides used on it, they are going to fail the pesticide screening. This is happening all over in Colorado, Washington and Oregon. This is what regulations bring. Furthermore, the economy of our industry is, we are clearly by the size of tax revenue, the largest industry in the county. $7.2 million in tax revenue and the excise tax far outweighs the $2.5 million in sales tax or the $600,000 in transient occupancy tax. If that $7.2 million was to be collected on two increments, we would be looking at $14 million in general revenues that you would have discretion over. If there are problems associated with the industry, those revenues provide the opportunity to solve it.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be taking a short break after the next speaker.
Marty Crane. So over the last couple of years, we've heard a lot of expert testimony, well researched. And many times we've found ourselves at a place where we should be getting down to the work of figuring it all out and coming up with a product. And we didn't. We used to hear all the time that we're kicking the can down the road again. And then the buke fire, then the tree mortality, then all the other disasters that keep coming to our doorstep. So here we are again today with some amazing testimony from the brilliance of our communities. I would never even pretend to be able to speak intelligently enough about this industry. But you've heard all that. So when you each ran for this position on the board, you may have run on a certain platform and... But when we elect you, we expect that, we figure, when you ran, this is what you knew. This is what we all knew and that's why you ran on that. But once you get more information, it is, when we hired you for this job, we hired you to process all this information and come up with better solutions as we move forward, not stick with what you had before. So if, just because you made a promise once before doesn't mean that based on the same information, that might be the case. But once you have better information, we expect you to step up and be the hero. You each have a chance to be a hero today for the whole county. And I attended the two-day, one last thing, I attended the two-day strategic planning meeting and it was acknowledged that this county has one year to get their economic house in order. One year. About four years ago, Lori, former CAO Lori Norton, put us on a five-year path to solvency. All we had to do was respect our reserves and stay out of the way. We weren't able to do that all that time, for whatever reason, but now we're down to one year. So we have a job to do. We have to get down to brass tacks, have the conversations, do the work that you were hired to do. And three to two is not good. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Oh, and I just wanted to say that I heard back from, about the, I heard back about the Murphy Spire and County Social Services is handling it. Only two homes and several businesses were evacuated. No need for Red Cross at this time.
Thank you very much.
So just a little update.
Morning. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be taking a short break. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We were at public comment. Is there any other speakers? And ladies and gentlemen, just so we gauge time here, how many speakers are desiring to address on this agenda item from the public? See a show of hands? And that goes for folks in the adjoining room and out in the hallway. If you intend to speak during this particular agendized item, please let the board know if you intend. Okay, thank you. You may proceed, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm going to speak just for a minute. I'm a part homeowner of Calaveras County and I use cannabis for medical reasons only, not recreational. We do like to grow it because it's cheaper that way. And I write up in the past history of cannabis and hemp and I believe it's better for the soil and better for the economy. It produces a harvest every four months. It's a good harvest. It's a weed. It doesn't need a lot of watering and a lot of nurturing that the trees do. Cannabis is just a good hemp product. It's not only used for medical reasons, it's used for other recreational uses. But as far as a medical reason, I believe in hemp and cannabis. And I'd like to have the ban not be placed for those reasons. Does that make sense?
It does.
That's it.
Thank you.
So, no ban. No ban.
Next speaker?
Hello. Hello. I'm just going to read what I wrote. My name is Sarah Hobson. I was born and raised in Mountain Ranch. I'm a college graduate, property owner and grower. I went to Calaveras High School. My family lives here. This is my community. I've been so blessed to have the opportunity to live and make a living here in Calaveras. Cannabis farming is holding our community together. It's providing opportunities and allowing for economic development. The general plan outlines goals for economic development. Calaveras has been one of the poorest counties in California and there have been very few viable career opportunities. There's a longstanding meth and opiate problem and there's not a single college within the county. Most youth leave after high school and those that don't often face poverty and drug issues. This has finally begun to change with the increase in the cannabis industry. A ban or a regulation that is so strict that it is no different than a ban would do the exact opposite of what is good for the community. It would uproot families, force people on both sides, in the industry and not in the industry, to go elsewhere for work. It would tear the community apart, eliminate opportunities and potentially bankrupt the county and lead to economic collapse. The strict regulation option proposed is no better than a ban. It puts approximately 90% of farms out of business. This decreases the money from the cannabis taxes, down 90% as well. It would create a huge land exodus and simultaneously a land rush as every grower wishing to stay in business tries to find a viable relocation plan. Growers have already spent tens of thousands of dollars to comply with the law and many have not been given due process. Some growers' applications have been processed, some have not, some have been put through the wringer, others have been seemingly overlooked in the process. The urgency ordinance is not the first, the only regulation, sorry, is not the first regulation attempt. There was a permanent regulation ordinance passed or voted on by the board before that, back in January, February of 2016. The EIR was initiated because of and related to this document. Personally, I have spent well over $200,000 to come into compliance and develop my business to fit around the stated rules and regulations. I've been through an appeal process. I've made mistakes along the way with some of the things that I've done, especially related to the grading and environmental concerns. I've learned much about better ways of doing things and I'm working to mitigate damage and correct my mistakes. I'm in process of a $100,000 regrading remediation project on my land and I'm happy to be doing it because I don't want to be part of the problem. I want to be part of the solution and I can be used as an example of how regulation is working to correct problems that have been created by an unregulated industry. I can assure you that the cartels are not going to be fixing their damages.
Next speaker? Bonnie?
Good afternoon. I'm thinking about money. I am thinking about money. In two and a half months, recreational marijuana will be legal. Last year, I predicted it would take three years for things to settle down. So that means this year I've got to say two years till things settle down. Sheriff thought it was going to be maybe three or four more years till things settle down. I'm thinking of my IHSS program needing $5 million a year. You know the state's pulling out their share of the IHSS program. I think it's only a matter of time before we can expect the federal government might just pull the plug on Medicaid. Then where are we going to be? Where's the money going to come from? $5 million to pay people to stay out of facilities? I get the Stockton Record and I get the, I call it the dud, it's not the DeLorean Democrat, but it's the Sonora Paper. And my understanding is they're working on their indoor grows. Both board of supervisors are doing their considerations on the size of their indoor grows. So I haven't heard that there's an outright ban. I think, talking about disposal of illegal grows. Whenever I hear of how many tons has been buried, that to me is money being squandered. If we could find a way to locate a lab where they could process the cannabis, separate the compounds, do the experimentation, find out which works on what, because I'm telling you, I cared for a brain cancer patient. Cannabis came in a little brown pill. It was called Marinol. When he got sick to his stomach from the chemotherapy, he'd take one of those and he wouldn't throw up. He couldn't throw up because he had $175 pills of chemotherapy in his body. Kept him from having seizures, epilepsy, epileptic seizures. It is a medicine. We need to perfect what treatment is good for which compound in the substance. Then we can say that we've done our due diligence and explored all the avenues necessary to decide if this is a beneficial component, compound, or it is truly destructive. And we heard about alcohol already. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good afternoon, everyone. Prepona Randall Smith, District Three voter. I think that with everything that you've all heard today and everything that you've read, that it's very clear that you have before you enough information to pass a reasonable regulation, strict. strict, and do so in such a way that you can satisfy, to a degree, um, or actually satisfy all the legitimate concerns of the neighbors. To the extent that there are illegitimate concerns, you're never going to satisfy those. Just never going to happen. But today, finally, we're going to know where all of you stand. Well, we think we know where at least a couple of you stand, but at whatever you do today, you own it. No more blaming the old board, no more blaming anybody. You own the outcome of your decision today. Um, Vijay here thinks that you should regulate. So do I. Um, I just, I'm very, very concerned about what will happen if you go for a ban. It'll just tear this place apart, continue to tear this place apart. Um, and I will also point out for the record that I actually believe that these guy, the side, this side here has been very well behaved and has been well behaved for quite a while. Um, we haven't heard that over here and these two. What these two did today was, was just atrocious. I'll say more about that during public comment at the end of the meeting, I guess tomorrow, right? Tomorrow we'll have public comment at the end of the meeting. But we got to get past all the anger, the hatred. We got to get past this, and the way to do it is to regulate. This industry will then go right back into the fabric of society. It won't even be noticed. It'll only even know it's here. Go back to being a very quiet industry doing its thing. And finally, I do want to ask for this. If you do regulate, please include manufacturing and distribution. 7% taxes on all, everything that's manufactured. It's a lot of extra money. Distribution is going to be the key to this whole thing. And finally, one last thing. I think there's a lot of misunderstandings about microbusiness. Microbusiness license number 12 is a state-level license. There is no microbusiness license at the local level. To get a state-level microbusiness license, you have to have three of four categories: cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, transport, and retail. If you have three of those, and it can be across the state, not in one jurisdiction, then you apply for a microbusiness license from the state, and it's the most expensive license, $60,000 to the state to get that license. Um, so please allow manufacturing and distribution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers regarding public comment on this agenda item?
Hi, my name's Nick Bertolero. Pardon me if I go over something that we've already talked about. I was working today, uh, appraising. I talked to a lot of people throughout West Point, District Two, and also in the twenties. Those are my areas. Um, some things that I think are common sense for both regulation and the ban. For regulation, a tiered system. So, uh, for people who own, you know, two acres, maybe they don't, they shouldn't be able to do 22,000 square feet because that does start to encroach on other people. Maybe they should have a limit of up to 1,000. And for five acres, maybe, you know, 5,000 or whatever. But a tiered system would seem to work better than a one-size-fits-all because a, a 22,000 square foot grow on a 20-acre parcel is a lot easier to mitigate than one on a two-acre parcel. As for if you ban it, I really want to strongly suggest allowing the outdoor cultivation of up to six plants at least. I personally have had an indoor grow medically. It costs over $2,000 just to run six plants for yourself, just in startup costs. That's not something that every patient can afford. That's not something that, and that's just in the startup cost. That's not including electricity, which, of course, we all know is environmentally unfriendly. Why would you want to spend money on electricity, waste our energy that could be put towards lighting our houses to grow this plant that can just easily be grown outdoors? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. I'm Katrine Lambie from West Point, and, um, I just have two things to say. I have heard people here say a lot, uh, today that this is about money. It's about money. Well, I want to say that in our community, it's not just about money. We have gotten to know some growers very well. They are active and positive participants in our community. They have improved the fabric of our community, and for some people, they've made friendships. So, it's not just about money. It's about also a renewal of energy in some communities like West Point. And the second point I want to make is that I've heard that this should be done for our children, for the children, their children dying, children, children. First of all, we're not going to have many children left in this county if we kick out every young person. And secondly, I run a youth center, and I have yet to see a young child die of marijuana poisoning. However, in the 17 years I've done this work, I have seen many, many, many children's lives impacted by meth and alcohol. And all of a sudden, these two words have disappeared out of our discourse. That is a real problem for our children right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Aaron Elliott, District Four. Thank you all for what you do. I love this county. I love this place. If, if I can give you guys more money, even if you won't let me pay your taxes, if we can get a donation to help, help fund the roads or something, just want to help this place. I love the political stuff I've learned about, the beautiful, eclectic, eccentric people, the passion. I just, I really appreciate all of you. I actually had the Blumer poem Mark Twain reference, but I'm afraid my, my supervisor might walk out on me if I do anything. But sometimes art and poetry are ways to get through cognitive dissonance when we have a block in our head and we're afraid to get to pragmatism and put past emotion. But instead, I guess I'll just go to, I heard something that you guys might be able to answer questions. Um, and one I had was Mr. Mills or anyone, if you could tell me your opinion on why cannabis is illegal, that would be phenomenal for me to hear. And also, if we are going to increase the calls, number of calls, criminal complaints, and decrease the amount of officers, as our wonderful Sheriff DiPaese Leo has mentioned, how that will make this place safer, and if you think it will make this place safer, and if, if that is the opinion of the rest of the staff, why, why you feel differently about that, and why you feel like no regulation on cannabis can at all make this place safer, I would love to hear it. I appreciate you. I love you all. Your reflections of myself.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hi, uh, board, staff. Um, my name's Jim Casey, uh, District Two. Uh, taught at Calaveras Unified, taught for Calaveras Unified at West Point for 20 years. And, um, first of all, I, I love the staff here. When the young lady was up here singing, everyone stopped what they were doing. I know you're busy people. Every, to a person, they stopped, turned this, and I think they were smiling, so it could have been too bad. Uh, thanks for, for having, uh, that kind of sense of humor. And I'd, real quick, I'd want to follow up on what Katrine Lambie said, uh, because I've had kids in my classroom, five, six, seven hundred kids over 20 years. Marijuana was never a problem. It was always, they were hungry, or meth, or alcohol, or didn't have a place to stay, or didn't have a backpack. So, every time we get desperate, we say, well, what about the kids? Um, and, and I am not a grower. I'm not a user. Um, but I have made a lot of friends in the cannabis industry. What I did is I brought, bought some books, which I always do, go to Amazon, buy some books. I have a couple of really good titles if you're interested. And then I decided to go out and kind of insinuate myself into several grows, you know? Can I come help? Can I come see your place? And after asking and asking and figuring I wasn't a spy, I went out there and visited, and I got to know quite a few people. And I really liked these people. I mean, there are a couple of nuts out there, but they're kind of nuts who better be growing cannabis because they're not going to be able to do anything else. But for the most part, they're nice folks, hardworking folks, earnest folks. They eat their vegetables. They say their prayers, and they're not demons. And so, I would ask this group here, there's a gentleman up here that offered to let them come out and see, uh, the operation. Please, please, please take advantage of that. If you have not been to a well-run grow site, then you can't really address the issue. Um, I was very skeptical at first, and when I looked at the list, there were 70 grows in my area. So, I thought I'd better get out and look and see what's happening. But the beloved blueberry farm is now a grow, uh, with a few blueberries thrown in. So, I brought some cookies over. Got to know my neighbor. Here's my number, in case anything happens, we can call each other. Um, and it's worked out. I'm far less fearful of all the draconian things that can happen. And all the research I've done, Colorado, Washington, uh, and, and Oregon, the sky did not fall. It wasn't sometimes an easy transition, but busloads of kids weren't driven off a cliff by a stone bus driver. It just has to be kept reasonable. And so, if we're going to make an argument for or against the ban, there have to be reasonable arguments. We have to address the reality, not just our ideology, so that we can have our way. Thank you very much for your patience here.
Thank you. Is there any other public speakers on Agenda Item Number Four? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, it is nearly 5 o'clock. Prior to adjourning for the day, we will be coming back tomorrow. Uh, that would be at 9 o'clock, okay? But before we adjourn, there is one issue that we need to address, County Council. Uh, would you please explain Rule 27 as it applies here? If it does.
Rule 27 of the Board Rules and Procedures discusses voting, and it does require that a supervisor who is absent from all or a part of, one, a public hearing, two, an item that requires findings, or three, an item that is quasi-judicial in nature, um, that they may subsequently vote on the matter if the supervisor has reviewed all evidence received during his or her absence. Um, that can be done either by listening to the clerk's recording or read a true and complete transcript of the proceedings, and that they must state that they have reviewed the evidence or testimony that they did not receive while they were absent into the record before the vote is taken.
Okay. Thank you very much. Supervisor Mills, Supervisor Clapp, is there a statement you want to make regarding that particular rule at this time?
Since we haven't got an opportunity, had an opportunity to actually review or look that part of the transcript over, that would be something that we would probably be able to take up before we vote, uh, tomorrow, if that's when we're going to vote.
Okay. Acceptable to me. Supervisor Clapp, you concur? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be continuing the hearing on Item Number Four, and that'll be board deliberation, and we'll be taking a vote tomorrow on that. Then we'll continue with Item Number Five.
Chair, is it possible to, uh?
On the board, sir, um, what proof are we going to have that they actually do what they're supposed to do?
Counsel.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me address this point of order. There are elected officials. This is going to sound funny. Would their word be good enough for you? I, I, I will make sure that that's being done, and I will personally testify to that. Now, I'm not going to sit down and buy popcorn with them.
If you need to babysit me, it's too late. Uh, Chair, I'd like to bring up a point, um, that if we're going to have, uh, Item Number Five extend beyond a normal time, uh, tomorrow, because of the timing, would it be more preference, preferable to set that item off to another meeting or another date so that we, because the, the most critical one is Item Number Four. Would the board consider that? Because I know, Francis, I won't be available on Thursday. If we should have to run into Thursday or Friday, I'm not going to be here, and I know Supervisor Tofanelli is going to be gone next Tuesday afternoon.
I think I want to poll the board on that. Um, but before we call for the poll, I, I would like to know if the availability tomorrow by the board is acceptable to the board members, and if we do extend, we'll have to reschedule that extension or continuation. County Council, are we permitted to do that?
Just so I'm clear with the question is, um, are you referring to whether you finish Item Four or whether, if you, if the board is not able to finish Number Four, you can certainly continue the matter to a, another date certain, another board meeting that is already pre-scheduled. That is certainly something that this board has the discretion to do. Uh, we would just have to look at, at what point, um, it would be heard next and, and look at the Brown Act requirements for posting the agenda and meet those requirements, which staff would do.
Okay. It, it's the board's intention to finish Item Four tomorrow, correct? Uh, I think we're speaking on Item Five, which is, uh, the, the public hearing on the ordinance rescinding 17.91. If we were able to address that tomorrow, but not finish by, say, 5 o'clock, we could probably reschedule that to a next regular board attend, uh, meeting?
That would, it would apply to five as well. However, if this board, um, the board does have the option or the discretion to just table that item in its entirety to a future board meeting, considering we have, we are just finishing public comment on Number Four, and then that would allow for a full day's discussion on Number Four tomorrow. That would certainly be in the discretion of the board, though.
Okay. I think we'll make that decision as a board tomorrow. We'll see where we stand on Item Four and Item Five.
I agree.
Does everybody concur with that? Supervisor Clapp?
Yeah, we call it public comment.
Yeah, public comment on Item Four is close. Polling the board to, if we convene tomorrow in the hopes of finishing Item Four, can we, or would you be in agreeance to postpone Item Five to a later date on a regularly scheduled meeting? Which, we have to check Brown Act as far as agendizing that item in public notice. But in other words, we want to finish Four tomorrow, and if we can't finish Five, we would, we would actually send that to another board meeting.
Yeah, I'd go for that.
Okay. Supervisor Mills?
I agree.
Supervisor Tofanelli? I'm sorry, Gary.
Uh, it doesn't, I find whatever the board.
Mike?
I find whatever the board wants to do, but I think tomorrow we need to find out when we're going to close and then see how much public comment's going to be on Item Number Five. It's a full day like we did today, then obviously, we won't be able to finish tomorrow. And, and Supervisor Mills is correct. Immediately after the 24th meeting, I'm leaving to, for the LaFol Conference in San Diego, so.
Okay. That's understood. Supervisor Guaramendi?
I'll stick around until the job is done.
Okay. And I also concur. It's going to be a long day tomorrow, probably, but Supervisor Guaramendi, you have a comment?
Thank you. Before we break, I just want to, in the 10 months that I've sat in this chair, we have heard tons of public comment. I've heard people who've used humor, I've heard people who've used irony. I've had people threaten. I've had people yell. We have heard a lot of stuff, and you need to know that that is your right. It is guaranteed to you under the Constitution to petition your government. You have to stay within the rules. You know, you have your three minutes, but that is your right. And, and any time your public officials deny you that right, they're denying you your rights under the Constitution. So, we don't have a prohibition on singing. I think it was brought up that poetry, art, music are different ways to politically express yourself, and I hope that we do better. I think we are better than that. We need to let people have the opportunity to express themselves and to petition their government, and that is, that is very important, I think, to our democratic process and to me personally. So, I will never turn my back and walk out on a room just because I disagree with the way that you decide to communicate with your government. Thank you.
Order, please. Order. Supervisor Mills, you want to say something, obviously?
It was pretty obvious that you've got an old beside you that says, "Let the girls sing," so I don't know what to do with that either.
Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, we will convene at 9 o'clock tomorrow morning. Ladies and gentlemen, we will convene at 9 o'clock tomorrow morning.